It is 9:30 if everybody wants to find a seat. You don't have any? You're gonna have mine. I don't know. Okay, it's 9:32. If everybody will find a seat, we'll get started as soon as council is seated. Okay, at 9:32 on June 17th, we will call the Volusia County Council meeting to order and... I just lost two days? On the June 21st, Volusia County Council meeting is now called to order and as always, we will start with an invocation and then the pledge of allegiance. Just a brief explanation about the invocation. We welcome you if you would like to participate, someone from your faith group. Alls you need to do is send an email to kgreen@volusia.org. This is Kay Green way down here and she will tell you exactly what needs to happen. And so if you would like to, please stand for the invocation and then just remain standing for the pledge of allegiance. Thank you. Today, we have Pastor Ben Brown from Tamoka Christian Church. Thank you, sir, for coming.
Not a problem. Good morning, everybody. Again, I am Pastor Ben Brown from the Tamoka Christian Church, formerly the Plymouth Avenue Christian Church on Plymouth Avenue. If you would please bow your heads and close your eyes. Father, in the mighty name of Jesus, we thank you. What an incredible God you are to give us the minds and hearts to serve others. You are our best example. You came from heaven to earth to serve us. And now we've gathered here this morning to serve others, some who are still sleeping going about their days, but decisions will be made here today, Lord, and we ask for your guidance. We ask that you would allow us to think outside of the box, that you would allow us to be innovative. We thank you for the victories we're about to experience because of your love for us. We make this prayer in Jesus' name, and everyone who agree with the prayer said amen? Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty, justice for all. I'd like to take this opportunity to acknowledge each and every one of you incredible people for your service. Mr. Ben Johnson, I like that first name. Danny Robbins, I see Ms. Wheeler's not here, but Mr. Jeff Brower, Mr. Fred Lowry, and Ms. Barbara Gertman. God bless you. Thank you so much for having me here today.
Thank you, sir. But we're pretty friendly. Nice to meet you. Thank you, sir. Chrissa, would you call the roll, please?
Mr. Robbins. Ms. Wheeler. Ms. Gertman.
Here.
Mr. Johnson. Dr. Lowry.
Here.
Ms. Post. Mr. Brower.
Here. We do have a quorum, thin though it may be, but we have a quorum. We always start our meetings with public participation. We are always glad to see you here to speak to your council. We just have a few this morning. First, we have Paul Richardson. And when you come up to speak, Mr. Richardson knows this, but there will be a timer on the monitor in front of you, on the screen behind me. You have three minutes to talk. Please just tell us where you're from, what part of the county, so we know where you're located. And you have three minutes. Thank you, Paul.
Morning, council. My name is Paul Richardson of Deland.
Number one, no more subsidies for fossil fuel industry, no more drilling on federal lands, no more drilling, including offshore, no ability for the oil industry to continue to drill, period, ends.
On January 20th, 2021, when President Joe Biden took office, the national average was $2.39.
Expensive gasoline, remember that.
Vice President Biden, your response, and then we're gonna have a final...
Just yesterday, the national average was over $5 a gallon. The Biden administration is now begging local oil companies to improve the situation. One cent of due gas companies have to make their products cheaper if they're gonna put them out of business anyway. I'm sure they want to put out a cheaper product, but they can't do it without more drilling or new refineries. On top of all this, in many popular toothpastes, in math laws, petroleum chemical byproduct is used in the blue color dyes to give the appearance of being as minty pressed as advertised. Nylons, polyester, EPOC, plastics, and other synthetic polymers are also made from petroleum too. And the oil companies and refineries, you can kiss all that goodbye. These source cited destructive policies being put into place by our leadership, Nita N. President Biden and Vice President Harris, be the moderate leaders you claim to be and reverse course in your punitive war against the working and the poor, because that is who is suffering under these high gas prices at this time. I don't get a penny or dime or recognition for thinking out against this, so this isn't just me gaslighting. I'm telling the truth here with regard to this. So again, I said, time to reverse course. We need to put, Biden administration need to put in policies that will make gas cheaper, not more expensive at this time. Thank you very much. You have a good day.
Cheryl Phoenicia and Lisa Burke, are you coming together? You will have three minutes. Just tell us where you're from, please.
We are from the Central Florida Pregnancy Center in Deltona, Florida, and we are actually going to be changing our name doing business as Hope Resource Center very soon, so.
We are a nonprofit in Deltona. We are a pregnancy center. We offer services that include free pregnancy tests, free ultrasounds, parenting classes, and a fatherhood program. Currently, we have a program for people who do choose to have an abortion. We are here to support you no matter what your decision is. By coming in and becoming part of our program, you receive free parenting classes. You can use those classes to buy stuff in our boutique, which is diaper, food, wipes, formula, clothing, everything for up to two years for the baby. We also have a thrift store, so for families in need, we give them a voucher and they can get whatever they need in the thrift store. We are not very ruled, we bend the rules a lot. We help a lot of people in the community.
Yeah, and we're very happy to be able to share what we have to offer the community. I'm sure lots of people have either daughters or nieces or... Actually, our unplanned pregnancies are not just, you would think, a lot of young teenage girls, but we actually have a lot of women coming in that are 40 and 41 years old and find themselves suddenly pregnant. And so we just love to be there to offer hope to these folks and to give them all the options and just to talk through stuff with them. And we're really just thrilled to be able to share what we have and hope that you will take advantage of our organization. And we have an open house coming up on August 13th. You're all invited. It's gonna be at 6:30 in the evening, 6:30 to 9:00, so you can come and go. And just a chance for you to see our center, have some appetizers, and just enjoy a nice evening together, so. Thank you.
We do not accept any government funding, except if you want to sponsor one of our events. We are fully donated by churches. Pastor Lowry's one of our sponsors. We're here to support everyone, and with this new legislation, we're going to see a lot more girls and they're gonna need a lot of our help. We need you to get the word out to your residents that we are here to help you, no matter what your decision. We recently saw a young girl was sent here from the court system. She wanted an abortion. The judge wanted her to talk to us. She had the abortion. Couple days later, she called. She tried to commit suicide afterwards. So we are here to help you. We do not push our agenda on you. We don't have an agenda. We don't want you to have an abortion, but we are here.
And our time is up. Thank you.
Thank you. John Nicholson.
John Nicholson, Beachside. I know a couple of months ago, Ben made a comment about having people come to the podium when they're running for office, and he thought it was inappropriate. Yes and no. Daytona Beach has had that problem with the gentleman for years, and he'd hold up signs, his phone number, where to donate, things of that nature. I'm not in favor of that, okay? But I do like the idea of them coming before you, because you will have to work with them. You will have to form some kind of partnership. And if you feel that they will not fit in well with a bunch of you, it is your obligation, and I believe it's beneficial to all of us if we find that out. Because when Danny ran, I didn't know him from a hole in the wall, all right? And I don't think I would have voted for him from the one time he spoke. I thought, oh my God, another right-winger, so far right that he doesn't know what's happening. And he didn't turn out that way, all right? He ended up one of my fabulous five. He worked well with you guys. He works extremely hard on all kinds of topics. So I would wonder if there was a possibility, because this is on the TV, people listen to it, and generally, it's at a church somewhere and there's only 10 or 12 people in the audience, and they know what's going on, but the rest of us don't. And as much as I go to meetings, I can't hit all meetings. I can't find out who's running for what, where, when, and how. So if there's some way of having them come before you guys, because you've got months to find out what they are really like. I know when Bency came open, I'm like, Heather Post has been here. I like what she's doing. She's a pain, but she works hard, all right? Then a gentleman popped up from, I think it was Port Orange, yeah, he sounds okay. Then on the radio, he pulled this really stupid blunder, and I'm like, oh my God, do we really want him? So now I don't know who to vote for, because I won't get a chance to hear what he's like before the election. So I'm asking you, think about the possibility of informing the entire community, who is gonna be sitting next to you guys and whether you'll be able to work with them. Thank you.
Cheriez Boyd.
Good morning, everyone. I'm Cheriez Boyd. I come from Daytona Beach, and I'm gonna beach y'all with this for a minute, because it's really bothering me. I know y'all have already approved the 2.4 million on this courtroom. I can't get over this. Recidivism rate in our county is third highest without, the only place, we're one of three places with the highest recidivism rate without a reentry center. We have to figure out a way to funnel people away from there. Number one reason people are going back to our jail, whether for the courts here or the federal state or county courts, a lot of it is just administrative. That's what a lot of them are coming back through. So if we're putting the money, 2.4 million, and when I repeat that, on one room, that money, half of that could go toward a reentry center. I already have someone willing to give us a place in Daytona. He's like, the building's yours, Ms. Boyd, because I know you'll do right by it. Why is no one addressing that? Another thing is, thank you very much for putting the signs in the strip clubs and parlors. I'm gonna beat this too. It's not enough. We need them in the Airbnbs. We need them in hotels. We need them on buses. We need to make people more aware. Our county right now is not doing well in regards to those two areas. And for us to just be Volusia County, Florida is third to California and Texas in the sex trafficking. This is a problem here. The Beacon Center is a place that can help them, and you all said you'd give them money and did, and that's a whole nother... I don't even get into that today, but I'm really here because I'm listening to the people. I'm watching it. We already have a governor that's not giving people back their right to vote, and we're not making it easy for people not to go back through the system. The resources are here. We're capable of doing it. If we create a resource center, a reentry center, it will take from the jail population. It will stop bringing in the homeless people who just want a free meal for the day. It will stop a lot of that. It will stop the mandating. It will slow down the overtime. It will alleviate Dr. Flowers's problems and issues. There's a solution. I just wanna know why no one up here will discuss it publicly, but they'll ask for $2.4 million for a courtroom. And I do understand why a courtroom costs that much, but if we don't have the inmates, then we wouldn't need the courtroom. And I understand Florida, the only state that all our prisons are a profit. We have to do something, because from where I'm sitting, it looks like y'all would rather lock people up than give them a second chance. Thank you.
Thank you to everyone who came to speak, and I just encourage the public to come and express their needs, concerns, and frustrations with us. That takes us to item one, the consent agenda. Does anyone have an item they would like to pull either for discussion or for a vote?
Chair, I had item just T for discussion, and, excuse me, H and T.
Move to accept the consent agenda.
Motion to accept the agenda as it is, by Lowry, second by Johnson. Nothing else to be pulled for comment? Okay, then we'll discuss that after the vote. Any, all in favor of passing the consent agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And motion carries five to zero. All right, so we'll look at item H. Danny, would you like to say something about it first?
Thank you. Yeah, item H. Brad, thank you. I just had a couple of questions. This is for the Door Sleeper Spruce Creek Preserve area. It consists of thousands of acres, or several thousand acres, sorry. It's a combination of state lands and other local. I just wanted, if you can, hit on it, just so people have a better understanding of what it is. And also, too, there's a lot of pages, 396 pages in that. I'm sure I missed something, but I just wanted to see if there's any notable changes, differences, or anything proactively that we've done or issues with that.
Yes, so thank you for the opportunity. The preserve is 2,513 acres. The state owns about 1,900 of it. We own portions of it. The Water Management District owns portions of it, and we own portions jointly. And because it's over 1,000 acres every 10 years, we're required to do a management plan update. And it essentially is saying, what have you accomplished in the last 10 years? Our goal in land management is always to get the habitat into the desirable future condition. And that is, when we walk into a scrub habitat or an uplands habitat, this is what it should look like. And I will proudly say our team has gotten us there really closely. Our land management team scored the highest they ever have in previous land management reviews, where the state sends experts, they identify some local experts. So we scored across eight dimensions, an average of 4.43 out of 5, and 5 is excellent. So what we've done here is just updated the plan. We've done a lot of work out there in order to get the habitat into the desired future condition. As you can see, if you looked at the plan, there's about 18 different types of habitat out there that we're managing. And so when we're talking about the changes to the plan, of course, we had an ad hoc advisory committee that was appointed by this council. Chair Brower served on with us as well, so we took committee feedback. Some of the highlights of the report is we were able to add disc golf as a conditional use in the future. Conditional use means that it's not denied, but you would have to work with staff in order, if you wanted to, add more amenities in terms of disc golf. In addition, we're suggesting to add as a conditional use an outdoor learning classroom on one of the areas of the preserve. I think Spruce Creek is unique. I think Spruce Creek is unique in that we have five access points for people to access the preserve. So we have different places where people can essentially enjoy the preserve. So those are, I believe, the bigger overall plans. We have submitted a recreation plan. My team, I have asked, you know, some of these preserves, we've owned for a long time, and it's, we've been very, kind of, haven't taken a holistic look as how can we take this to the next level for our citizens. And so we've included that recreation and amenity plan here as well, not only to allow them to enjoy it, but educate about this really unique spot that we have here. And I think that my echo board and team will be very happy that I think, when we talk about environmental, cultural, historic, and outdoor recreation, there is no better place than Spruce Creek Preserve to educate our community about those four things.
No, excellent, great, Brad, and great job, and everybody on the committee. Just one of the main things that I hear when I'm out and about is, what are we doing with this conservation, as I just sitting? So it's refreshing to hear that we do have plans to open up for outdoor recreation, because there are, you know, a lot of parents out there, and we don't want our kids sitting inside. But all this is beneficial to us. I'd like to see, I mean, a lot of crests for pickleball, believe it or not. I know the crowds can get loud, I don't know if that's come up in a topic for some of these properties, but appreciate you, and thank you. Thanks, that's all.
Brad, yeah, I was thinking exactly what Danny said, when you were mentioning all the habitats that we manage. I was gonna say, you also manage human habitat, because it's very open to the public. And when I visited there, there was hikers, there was bicyclists, there was frisbee golf people, there was everybody. It's an absolutely beautiful place. Please go visit it. Thank you for your work.
I think one of the things, too, and I've asked Nick, our land management leader, we've bought some counters now, because we don't have a good grasp on how many people are using these amenities, but I think that will help us. Especially as we bring Projects Florida to Florida Forever, to expand some of these preserves that we own, to be able to say that this is a valuable preserve, this, how many people visit it each year.
Okay, and letter T.
Thanks, Chair. Morning. The, let me look at this contract real quick. Just had a couple of questions. There was a fixed rate, or fixed number, in terms of our agreement in section 5.1.3 of the contract. Is it calling for an additional, or an allowance of another 150,000 on top of the fixed rate?
No, sir. The amount listed in there is 600,000.
Where is T? What's that stipulation at 5.1.3? The only reason I had a call on it, and I just have to be able to respond to it accurately as possible.
It just changes paper. If we go above that, it means there's a truth in negotiations certificate that needs to be included, that's all.
That's it? Okay. Alright, thank you.
Thank you. Alright, that takes us to item two, which will be interesting, the Feed the Need Fund Drive results, and Kevin Captain will bring us up to date on that.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, Honorable Members of Council, Kevin Captain, Community Information Director. Item number two is the Feed the Need Public Employees Food Fund Drive. This is a really exciting day today. This year's Public Employee Fund Drive was held between March 21st and April 1st, generating $15,776.15 in donations. Participating agencies included the County of Volusia, the Volusia County Tax Collector's Office, and 10 local city governments, Daytona Beach, Daytona Beach Shores, Edgewater, New Smyrna Beach, Orange City, Ormond Beach, Pearson, Ponce Inlet, Port Orange, and South Daytona. We call it Feed the Need, and the county's been organizing this fundraiser since 2012. Traditionally, the fundraiser has spurred a friendly, now I say friendly, but it's sometimes more than friendly, competition among participating agencies to make it a fun event for a very serious cause. So to just go through a few slides here, hunger in central Florida, 1 in 7 people are food insecure in our community, and that includes over 150,000 children of our population. 1 in 5 kids is at risk of going to bed hungry, and food insecurity also affects our elderly population. The Second Harvest Food Bank is a tremendous organization. They collect, store, and distribute to 86 partner agencies right here in Volusia County. $10 provides 40 meals. Now, in the past, you might recall, when we would donate food, we would bring in the tangible goods and put them into barrels, and we would measure it by weight. Well, now with this transition with COVID, we've been able to collect funds, and Second Harvest has so much more buying power. $1 of donated food for Second Harvest actually equates to $9 of food buying power. So it's a tremendous change and transition from the pandemic, and it really makes a huge difference. And it's also much easier for people to participate by being able to give money. Now, I also just want to shout out a big thanks to our Department of Corrections, because every year, when it was tangible food, and even now when it's money collection, they have been there at every step of the way to make sure things are collected and put together, you know, safely and secure. So, the winners, as I'm just about ready to advance the slide too quickly. We have two categories. We have a category of the most money collected, and then we have the category of the most money collected per capita, or per employee. Now, we had to extend this a little bit, because we wanted to make sure the numbers were totally valid. We wanted to be able to take these dollars to the bank, because as I said, friendly competition, it's great competition. So county, the county winner for the most money collected is Volusia County Fire Rescue, and that is at $2,320. So Fire Rescue. And also, for the most money collected, I'm gonna... is the City of Ormond Beach, and the City of Ormond Beach donated, I believe it was $700. And so is Loretta. Yes, you are here. Thank you. If you want to, we'll get a picture. If you want to just come up on the face of the council, and we'll get some pictures of you real quick. This is the category of the most money collected. One more.
Wait, my turn. Everybody down there, take a step to your left. Okay. County Council, take a step to your right. Another step to your right, county. Okay, that's it. Ready?
Alright, that's excellent. And now, Treasury and Billing is the county winner. For the most money per capita, they raised $2,283. So Craig Barthgartner and his team, come on up. And we're also gonna include the Town of Pearson. We have Councilman Gray Leonard with the Town of Pearson, who is here, and they collected $53 per capita, so over $500. Mr. Leonard?
County Council, step to your right. Okay.
Do you take, everybody take one step to the left? Or, yeah, you're right. Right. There you go. One, two, three, smile.
My turn. Okay. Let's just do it with Pearson alone. Wait till he's done, though. Okay.
So, yeah, Craig, you are here to come out, and then Councilman Leonard. Put you right in the center. Now, again, I just want to go back to the friendly part, because the county divisions in particular really wanted to make a difference. And there was sort of a little bit of a battle between Treasury and Billing, and our usual annual winner, Purchasing. So we felt it was very important, because Purchasing and the Town of Ponce Inlet, who is also an annual winner when it comes to per capita donations, again, it's a serious donation, they also deserve some credit. So we went ahead and put together a first runner-up award. So Purchasing, and Peg Hunt, and Janine Wet could not make today, but they're here in spirit. Just move down just a hair to your left. One more.
Fill the top of that certificate toward me, that'll reduce the glare. That's good. Okay, ready?
Thank you, everybody. So we'll be bringing the first runner-up certificates to Mayor Peritzky and the Town of Ponce Inlet team. And I will mention, every person, every division, every city and local government will get a certificate of acknowledgement and participation for the Feed the Need Fund Drive, because it is such an important activity. And so I also want to mention that, on the May 3 meeting, Councilwoman Gertman made a motion to also donate $10,000 to Second Harvest Food Bank from some of the leftover funds for our State of the County event. And so today, as a presentation, we took that $10,000 and bundled it with the $15,771 from our Feed the Need Drive, and we are going to present that to Second Harvest. And with us today is Stephanie Palacios from the Second Harvest Food Bank. She's the Director of Advocacy and Government Affairs. So Ms. Palacio, come on up, and if you want to say anything, and then I'll get that big check ready.
Awesome. Thank you so much. Second Harvest Food Bank can't do the work that we do without generous donors like county employees, or community partners like you all. Thank you so much for thinking of Second Harvest and the people that we serve. The people that we serve are people like you and I, and we're very appreciative of all the work that you've done, and we hope to work with you again in the future.
You can see the check.
County Council. Kevin, step to the left.
And that concludes item two. Thank you so much, everyone, and thank you all for coming and for participating.
Can I get a motion to approve the results? I don't know what you're gonna do if we vote for it and take it back. Motion to approve by Gertman, second by Lowry. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries five to zero. Brings us to item three, with, thank you, guys. This is why everybody wants to be a fireman, right? 2A. 2A by, is it gonna be Donna Butler or Brad, or county manager?
Yeah, I'll start. Yeah, at the last Tuesday's meeting, it brought to our attention that there'd been a, St. John's River Water Management District had a plan out there to surplus some property. Those concerns raised here, but I'm happy to report that the district received phone calls from us and other folks, I think around the district, and I want to thank them for listening to everybody's concerns, and they pulled the item from the agenda for their meeting. And again, we were to write a letter, but the conditions changed through the week, that I felt it was better to just talk to council this week, because I think the decisions that have been made by the district, the pullback, and this effort, and they've agreed if there was any effort in the future, that they would be involving all the stakeholders. So with that, I thought the nature of what we would send would probably be more along the lines of, thank you for listening, and we would welcome and want to work with them if there was anything like that in the future. We could put that letter together for council signature.
I would make that motion.
Motion made by Gertman, seconded by Johnson, to send a letter of appreciation and thank you, and I think that's appropriate, and we welcome that. It's an indication that, you know, we have to work with a lot of different agencies, and in this case, when we voiced a concern, the agency responded to our concerns. I know I got a call yesterday from spokesman for St. John's Water, we had a great conversation, and George, I want you to know that I just asked him that for now on, whenever he has any surplus land, just give it to us. So Ben Johnson.
I just want to reiterate it that Mike Register did call me last week shortly after the meeting and said that they had messed up by putting this on but had taken it back off, and really appreciated the conversation and let us know, and as we ask to let us know in the future. But also, we should recognize the fact that today they did send two representatives. Adam Lovejoy is sitting back there, and I don't remember his cohort's name, but anyway, it meant enough to them for them to show up today and make sure everything was okay with us, and we appreciate it. Just remember that we're all partners. Let us know in advance, and we appreciate that.
Anyone else? Okay, with that, we will call for a vote on having the county staff draft a letter of appreciation and thanks, and we look forward to good communication. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries five to zero. Thank you for coming in, Adam. And that takes us to item three, proclamation on Widow's Day.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, honorable members of council, Kevin Captain, Community Information Director. Item number three is a proclamation that we're happy to present here inside the council chambers. It is for Widow's Day, June the twenty-third of 2022. It was requested by Volusia County employee Tracy Faulkner to honor this Global Awareness Day. Volusia County Council Billy Wheeler presented or sponsored the proclamation and Mr. Chair on her behalf. If you could read it.
I'll be glad to. And on Billy's behalf, and just to let everybody know she really wanted to do this. She has a family medical emergency. Not her, fortunately, that she's where she needs to be this morning. Billy is also a widow, so this would have been appropriate for her. The proclamation states, "Whereas International Widow's Day was launched by the United Nations in 2010 to raise awareness of the needs and plight of widows and their families to give them a voice to be heard, seen, understood, and served; and whereas International Widow's Day encourages action in achieving full rights for widows, highlighting the need for more research and statistics into violence, discrimination, and poverty suffered by widows, and develop policies and programs to address those problems. And whereas there are nearly fourteen million widows in the United States; and whereas the Modern Widows Club, a national nonprofit founded in Orlando in 2011, leads the United States in advocacy, mentoring, and leadership for women in widowhood; and whereas the Central Florida Community of Modern Widows Club empowers widows in Volusia County and provides them with the tools to lean into life, build resilience, and make positive differences in their lives and those of others in their communities. Now, therefore, we, the County Council of Volusia County, Florida, do hereby proclaim June twenty-third, 2022, as Widow's Day of Awareness in Volusia County, and we urge residents to join us in supporting the Central Florida Community of Modern Widows Club in raising awareness of the need for advocacy, mentoring, and leadership for women of widowhood." And this beautiful proclamation is signed by every county council member. We would like to present it to you.
Thank you. I don't do public speaking. I want to just thank Mr. Rick Mill for taking the time to meet with me and getting this moved forward. He actually worked with my late husband, who I lost coming up on six and a half years ago. After finding Modern Widows Club, I definitely would not be at the state of my life that I'm in right now without them. So thank you so much for bringing this. You know, we need the awareness, which brings knowledge, which brings support. And without the support of my fellow whisters, as what we are called, Widow Sisters, there's no way that I could have made it to where I am today. So thank you all very much for your support.
Thank you. Yes. Pardon me? Thank you. I will also need a motion to approve the Widow's Day award. Motion by, what's it, Barb? And second, I'll give you the second, Dr. Lowry. Ben was right on, or Danny, one of them was right on. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries five to zero. Okay, that brings us to item four, the Annual Comprehensive Financial Report. Ryan Osowski.
Good morning, counsel. Ryan Osowski, Chief Financial Officer. Before James Moore, specifically Zach Chalifor, the partner on the job, gets up and gives a presentation on our Annual Comprehensive Financial Report, I wanted to provide an introduction. This year's presentation is actually a little bit later than typically would be, and that reflects the complications and work that went into implementing Amendment Ten. This is kind of the final piece of the financial cycle is the Annual Comprehensive Financial Report, which actually reports actual results. So this is the last piece of implementing Amendment Ten from a financial perspective. And this year, the work paper count, the amount of documents that your accounting team had to put together and provide to the auditors, increased from about three hundred to about four hundred and seventy-five, over a fifty percent increase in work that the accounting division had to put together related to Amendment Ten. That is because each one of the constitutional officers now has a separate audit, and your accounting division is the contracted team that works for the supervisor of elections, the tax collector, and the property praiser. In addition to the numbers I quoted, I don't know how many work papers the sheriff's office had to put together, but their team also had to put together separate work papers to provide to the auditors as well. You now also have two documents this year instead of a single document. This year has the Annual Comprehensive Financial Report, or formerly referred to as the Comprehensive Annual Financial Report. That document is as it always was. It is a unified document that presents the financial results of all of the county's activities, including the four constitutional officers. Transactions between those activities have been netted out, so it's basically as it always was. There's just a lot more work that goes into putting it together. Then you also have a new report that we're presenting this year, the Combined Countywide Annual Comprehensive Financial Report. We're abbreviating it CCA CFR. And what that is, is it's the standard document with the five separate audits behind it, representing all of the audits that the county's financial statements go through. Before I turn it over to Zach, I'd like to thank the accounting division and the folks that helped put this together. They're behind me, right here. Stand up. You have Lyndon Rice, your accounting director, Tiffany Alvarez, senior accountant, Tommy Long, accountant, Jason Weaver, accountant, Madeline Nelson, accountant, and Trudy Murdock, who is now your accounting manager. And now I will turn it over to Zach.
Ryan, before Zach starts, I'll just mention, if it pleases the council, in conversations with staff and I yesterday, we thought it would be appropriate to also move item eleven up after item four, after you're done, Zach, because it's also a financial presentation on the county cash and investment program. So it doesn't interfere or affect what you're doing. I just wanted council to know that if there was... Make sure there was no issues with moving that item forward. Okay. Thank you.
All right. Good morning, Zach Chalifor, partner, James Moore and company. Working through a few allergies, so hopefully it won't be too bad to listen to this morning. First and foremost, I do want to thank the council for the opportunity, also the constitutionals who were involved in the RFP process a year ago. We are glad to be back, and a big thank you as well to the accounting team, as Ryan referenced. I can absolutely attest, it was a lot more work from our perspective, but it's always one where, you know, we see kind of the final product, not all the blood, sweat, and tears that goes into getting there from the staff standpoint. So, you know, from the timing perspective, the audit is still on time with state statutes, things of that nature. Any applicable extensions were granted, so it definitely, from our perspective, was an accomplishment. There was no path model to follow to spin off all of your constitutional officers mid-year. So this was one where if Ryan said, "Hey, Zach, what should we do here?" I was like, "Well, here's what we see in other counties, but there's no path for what was done." So it very much was a lot of time and effort that went into getting to where we are today. Whoops, all the way. All right. So as Ryan noted, the county does prepare what's now called an Annual Comprehensive Financial Report. The 2020 report did receive a certificate of achievement for excellence in financial reporting from the Government Finance Officers Association. This year's report will be submitted, or probably already has been submitted as well, and we expect to see that awarded again for the 2021 financial statements. To summarize the reports that we issue, these, of course, are management's financial statements, and we issue five reports that summarize the results of our audit. The first is the report on the financial statements themselves. We did issue an unmodified opinion saying that the financial statements are fairly presented in all material respects. This is the best opinion that we can issue, and what you would want to see here in terms of saying, yes, the numbers can be relied upon. We also issue a report in accordance with government auditing standards looking at internal control and compliance. And while the focus of the audit is not on internal control and compliance, if we come across any deficiencies in the design or functioning of internal controls, or any compliance issues related to debt, budget, grants, things of that nature, we would report those here. We had no findings to report this year, so a clean report on that front. We also, as in past years, perform a federal and a state single audit, where that's basically where we have to perform a mini-compliance audit over what are your, what's called, major grant programs. They're looking at a much more detailed level, solely focused on compliance. Over those, I believe this year, there were about seven major grants that we looked at. There were no compliance matters reported through that testing. The fourth report is a management letter required by the State of Florida Auditor General. It's kind of a catch-all, looking at different areas. If there were any prior year comments, we would have to follow up on those. But also, we look at financial condition, and if there's any metrics that the county hits that kind of raise a red flag or are otherwise of concern, those would have to be identified. The county is in a strong financial position, so there were no issues identified on that front. And then lastly, we do have to look at the county's compliance with state statutes over investment policy and activity, as well as the use of E-911 funds, and we did note the county to be in compliance with those statutes. So as Ryan mentioned, the end results of the audit is there were additional four audits required to be performed and reports issued this year. So I did a quick little visual to kind of paint the picture of pre-this current fiscal year, before Amendment Ten, and then what it looked like this year, as well as next year, is, first, your countywide, that portion got bigger because there's more combining schedules, more things to discuss about the constitutional officers and so forth. But otherwise, that document generally, conceptually, is the same as it's been in the past. But what we now have is excluding the clerk, your other four constitutional officers, those all have separate standalone audit reports of those offices, kind of in a vacuum because they are more autonomous than previously. The clerk of the court, that has always been separately audited, previously by another auditor. We will be performing that audit beginning next year based on last year's RFP. From a practical standpoint, it's one where much like the ad authorities have historically been audited separately, but then they roll up into the countywide audit. It's the same concept here with your constitutional officers primarily. Each of those have a general fund, some have a few other funds, but generally, it's all of those officers or offices' activity then rolls back up into the countywide general fund. So take a quick look at where you're at at the end of the year, and some of these numbers, I actually will come back to probably tie into the cash report as we took a little bit of a look at that, seeing that on the agenda. What we've got here is your fund balance in the general fund, basically your assets minus your liabilities. And we have a quick side-by-side comparison because, as has been the case in prior years, what's presented as the general fund for financial reporting is a little bit different than what's in your 001 general fund for budget purposes. There are other funds that, based on accounting standards, have to get rolled back in for reporting purposes here. So we have first, a quick look in total, and then that second column just backs out the CARES Act and ARPA transition funds because of those monies kind of being one-time from those grant funds that have moved over into those transition funds for those specific purposes identified for those funds to be used. Those different categories of your fund balance, the non-spendable relates to any prepaid items or deposits where you don't have those resources and cash funds to go spend on something else. The restricted is anything that is externally restricted. Most of those restricted funds that the county has, those are already recorded in separate funds to really have that accountability and transparency over the use of those dollars. So that's why that number is very small in the general fund. There were no resources classified as committed. And then the assigned and unassigned is basically your unrestricted dollars, but assigned means that it's been earmarked for a specific purpose. While the use of those funds and intent could be changed, you would have to kind of pull from one bucket to use it for something else. So a large part of those assigned resources there relate to the emergency reserve and other items established through your annual budget process. To look at what your assigned plus unassigned is relative to what you spent in the general fund, we compare this to a benchmark from the GFOA that says that you should have a bare minimum of two months, or really a better minimum number is three months for a coastal community, looking at this measurement. So we backed out those one-time, you know, CARES and ARPA monies that really wouldn't have been there without COVID and weren't based on your kind of normal operations, so to speak, and compared that to what was spent. You're at just under forty-two percent, so a little bit over, about two months over that minimum recommendation. I always do like to highlight the fact, though, that that's a minimum recommendation, and you can see that number did drop down a little bit from last year where it did kind of... Last year took a pretty jump, pretty large jump upward, again, due to some of those COVID dollars and others that resulted in an increase in your fiscal year 2020 fund balance over the prior year. Financially, we also like to look at your proprietary funds, moving beyond the general fund, and just look at those generally from a trend perspective to see if there's any red flags or concerns that come to our attention. Normally, what we like to see here is a kind of a steady increase year-over-year inflationary, so to speak, is, you know, your biggest baseline, but there's plenty of reasons why that can fluctuate up or down. Notably here, air... but there's plenty of reasons why that can fluctuate up or down. Notably here, airport, VOTRAN, both had a few large increases recent years, again, largely due to some of that COVID funding that came in additionally to those funds. Your water and sewer, that's generally based on the timing of capital projects. A utility like that, it's one where it needs to be designed to generate a positive cash flow, and then it comes down to, well, how much and how often are those major capital improvements to that system required? The only fund with a negative trend here is the parking garage. That's generally due to the fact that there are still some debt repayments, the tune of almost a million dollars a year being made. So once those go away, in a couple of years, that would then shift positive and comes down to saying, well, what are those long-term capital requirements going to be in the parking garage? But again, still a positive balance here, and overall relatively small compared to the rest of the county's activities as a whole. And then lastly, do want to just highlight on the grant fund, on the grant front, as I mentioned, we do perform a federal and state single audit, but just to highlight the dollars that were spent, you know, as far as the county leveraging federal and state grant funds. This year was the second highest year in terms of the use of grant funds, about $117 million. Last year was the highest, we had a huge number from the CARES Act funds, but this year still had about $31 million from the CARES Act, $13 million related to the ARPA funds, emergency rental assistance of about $8 million, then normal with prior years, a pretty good chunk going into both VOTRAN and airport for some operating, and then always a lot of capital grant funding on those fronts as well. So that covers my highlights. I'd be more than glad to answer any questions, and thank you all again for the chance to be here.
Counsel, any questions or discussion?
Thank you, Chair. No real questions. Just really pleased to know that, as thorough as a look as you've taken, that our accounting team is doing a great job, and I do appreciate you, and I appreciate them for their hard work, because there's a lot, there's a lot to it, and there's so much more through these last two years. I'm sure staffing challenges, everything combined. So I really am impressed with our staff and how, how well they handle our finances and accounting, and just stand with us to make us the best that we can be. And I just want you all to know how much you're appreciated for that.
Also, if you would go back to slide 44, and I just...
I don't have the numbers online.
It's the second slide, one of your opening slides, Excellence in Financial Reporting. I'd just like to remind the public, this is a report that has nothing to do with, well, it has everything to do with how much money we spend, it reports it, it accounts for it. But that's, that's the council's decision of how we spend money, what we spend it on. This is a result of them trying to track what the heck we do and do it accurately. And I think it's just amazing that we have this certificate of achievement for excellence in financial reporting. And I would just like all of you to stand up and receive recognition, and all the way in the back of the room there, too, the accounting department, Ryan, stand up, and I think you deserve a round of applause. It's not a huge staff, and it's a huge amount of money that you track and account for, and we appreciate how you do it. So, thank you. I do need a motion to accept the report.
So moved.
Motion to accept by Vice Chair Gertman, second by, is it Ben Johnson? If that isn't him? Second by Johnson. Any other discussion or questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries 5-0. Thank you for your report. And now, we will go to item 11, the County Cash and Investment Program presentation. Ryan Osowski.
All right. Thank you again. As the chair had mentioned, we moved this up because we'd like the opportunity, if there's any questions that the auditor might be able to, to answer, he'll still be here. So thank you for rearranging the schedule. And I'm here today to go over the county's pooled cash and investment program balances and the purpose of the program. And this report always is done in tandem with the audit, because we're waiting for those final audited numbers to put into this presentation. As an overview, I'd like to cover explaining why we use the pooled cash program, how it works, what portions of the program are owned by the different operations in our government, as well as some charts and graphs to show that in a visual format, and then demonstrate how reserves and fund balance are related to the county's cash on hand. They're actually almost the same thing. First, we use fund accounting, as issued in that audit report, because it's required by state law. It's good financial practice as well. Even if it wasn't required by state law, fund accounting is how you track the use of restricted resources on their restricted purposes. By using a fund, which is like a checkbook, it's like a self-contained unit of accounting, you know what assets and liabilities each separate operation has. And that can also be used to demonstrate compliance for grants, as well as other restricted purpose funds, like the gas tax can only be used on certain purposes, so it has its own fund, the county transportation trust fund, impact fees, et cetera. When you have these restricted purposes, we make a new fund. However, because we have so many funds to track separately to demonstrate that compliance, you end up with a lot of bank balances, a lot of cash in each one of these funds. So we actually make another fund, called a pooled cash fund, that actually pools all that together. So all of our funds actually are pooled for investment purposes into one investment program, and we do a quarterly investment report that provides the results of how our investments are doing and the earnings on that. But that report is, again, consolidated, and it's all of the cash that the county has at that point in time, with the exception of some funds that are held outside the pool that I will cover later. Like I mentioned, the investment pool is its own fund. There's a daily sweeping of balances, so if an individual fund makes a purchase, then that obviously is coming out of our bank account. The pooled cash investment fund is what tracks all of that activity and makes investments and divestments as necessary. The pooled balances that are reported in that report that I mentioned previously are listed here for each one of the quarterly reports. You'll notice that it is cyclical, and that is largely based on our property tax cycle. Most residents receive their tax bill and pay it in the quarter ended December 31st, so that they can utilize the 4% or 3% discount whichever month they're paying in. Majority of that actually happens in the 4% discount month of November. So we have the largest cash balance every year in our cycle at December 31st. But all that cash is planned for in our budget. Even though we receive it ahead of time, the expenditures are planned annually in our budget. Therefore, that cash is drawn upon as the planned expenditures occur in our budget in the quarters that As I mentioned, there are some funds that are held outside of the investment pool, specifically because we are tying back to our annual comprehensive financial report. Most notably, now that we're post amendment 10, all of the constitutional officers have their separate bank accounts. They are not invested in our investment pool, so that is held outside. When we got our federal COVID funds, it was a large influx of funds all at a single time. Most federal grants are actually not at cash advances, but the COVID funds were. So we opened individual investment accounts to track those separately and to invest that in a short-term investment as opposed to our pool program, which is invested over a longer term. Zach had mentioned that the advertising authorities are kind of a parallel for the constitutional officers as far as financial reporting. It's also a parallel for our cash. They have their own bank accounts that are integrated into our report, but they are held outside of our pool. There's a couple other accounts that are listed here for the various reasons that they're listed, but I will not go over those individually unless you have any questions on them. So a summary of which funds own their piece of the investment pool, and what balances are held outside of the pool. Attached to the agenda item is a more detailed report, but this is a summary by fund type. In the detailed report, you can actually see the balances that tie to each one of these for their, for their purposes. For example, the county transportation trust is a special revenue fund. If you add all the special revenue funds together, that's what's presented on this slide here. The general fund, as Zach was mentioning previously, now includes the results of the majority of the constitutional officers' operations. That's the large cash and investments held outside of the pool on the general fund line. The rest of the pooled cash and investments on the general fund line are either your budgetary general fund, which is the OO1 fund, or also other funds that were required by accounting standards to aggregate into our general fund, which includes your EMS, your economic development, your homeless initiatives, your economic development incentives fund, ARPA, and CARES Act transition funds. So all that detail is actually available in the report, but for accounting purposes, we classify all of those as the general fund. In your special revenue funds, I had already mentioned the gas taxes there, but it also includes ECHO and FOREVER, and FOREVER Land Management, as well as a list of other funds. But each one of those funds has a cash balance. We're all aware that there is money available in the ECHO fund. We'll actually see it later today in our five-year forecast, how much the reserves are in that fund. Those reserves are held in the form of cash and represented as part of the $204 million number that's listed here. Debt service funds is a small number, but we are required by our debt covenants to monthly set aside money to pay our future debt. Capital projects funds are just that, money being accumulated for a capital project. Our largest example of that is the 800 megahertz radio project. We have over, just over $24 million of cash on hand at September 30th, related to the 800 megahertz project, but that money has already been designated for that project. While it's held, and it is part of our $569 million pool, it has that purpose. It is for the 800 megahertz, and it's already been committed for that purpose. Other capital project funds include the medical examiner's office. While these funds are largely assigned and not restricted externally, if you were to change what their purpose was, you would have to abandon that project, like the 800 megahertz or the medical examiner's facility. The enterprise funds, of course, includes your VOTRAN and your airport funds, which get large grants. And the cash balance is primarily related to the airport. They have over, it kind of relates to the net position that Zach was just showing for the airport with the $31 million of net position. They also have $30 million of cash on hand. They're the same. The net position, or the fund balance, or the reserves, they're all different terms that we use to refer to the same equity that exists in the fund. That equity is held in the form of cash. They are one and the same. The internal service funds includes two main types. Our fleet replacement program and our computer replacement program, I call that the first type, the saving up for the future replacement of assets. We do that so that we don't have to take out expensive debt to just replace capital assets, or even more expensively, do capital leases, which have implied interest rates that are well above market rate. By saving for those future asset replacements, we are avoiding all of that high interest cost. The other piece of that is for insurance trusts. We are self-insured for both health insurance and our operating insurances. We are required to have funds on hand to cover claims, all the outstanding claims, so those ones are actually held as required by law. Finally, listed as the other, the grants and fiduciary funds, the majority of that cash balance is held outside the pool. That's the COVID funds that I was referring to earlier. This is a visualization of that slide that I was just talking about. You can see that the general fund is only 17%. And of that, there's actually a composition that's listed there of how much of that was budgeted reserves, reserves for emergency, reserves for economic development, reserves for EMS. There's the various, all the reserves that are actually demonstrated in the final pages of the report, as well as our other assigned and unassigned We also do a comparison of our county cash that's on hand at the end of the fiscal year compared to our peer counties. Our peer counties are determined by the Florida Auditor General, and the way that they do that is based on population and tax base. Specifically, our population and tax base criteria is counties with more than 300,000 residents and a property tax base of 12.5 to $45 billion. So that's, that's how the auditor general determines who our peers are. So we've gone out and we've pulled their cash balances on their last audit, as well as their population, to calculate the cash on hand per capita. There are a couple of outlier counties that have larger, much larger cash per capita on hand. There's also Lake County, which is, I would say, an outlier from the lower side. But if you exclude those, we are right on par with the other counties, and because of the way that the weighting works, we're actually below the group average. Finally, said I wanted to demonstrate the general fund as an example, cash versus reserves, because they are one and the same. If you were to take our financial report, and in the general fund, you look at all of our cash and investments balance, you have $118 million. We have other assets, such as receivables due from other governments, inventories, prepaid expenses of $40 million approximately. Then you have liabilities, immediate claims that we will have to pay shortly after September 30th, accounts payable, accrued payroll, and retainage payable on construction projects, other things that are immediately liabilities that we'll have to pay. That is a deduction to arrive at your total fund balance. And that, in essence, is the premise that I'm trying to explain. It goes back to the basic accounting equation, which is assets equals liability plus equity. When we refer to reserves, that is a budgeting for future equity, and we carry forward in the budget appropriated fund balance. That's last year's equity being carried forward. So those numbers, those reserves, those appropriated fund balances are one side of the accounting equation, and the other side is the assets. So the reserves are held in the form of cash. So when you have the pooled cash and investment report that has $600 million, or $700 million, if you include the assets held outside the pool, those are already planned for and assigned in the budget as the reserves. And each one of the funds, as we go through them, when you see the reserves listed there, they are part of the cash balance that makes up the investment report. It is not a separate balance. I have a walkthrough of the unrestricted fund balance of how it's been assigned, but I will spare going through that unless you have any questions. And with that, that wraps up my presentation on the county's cash and investments as of September 30th, 2021.
Ryan, would you just speak briefly about, everybody's watching the stock market now, and the roller coaster, mostly down, Bitcoin. Having watched you work for the last 18 months, I know that you are very cautious. You do not take risks with the county's, with the taxpayers' money, and yet your job is to find instruments that pay the highest, the highest amount of interest as possible with the greatest amount of protection. Can you just discuss what kind of instruments you choose for different categories, long-term, short-term?
Sure. There's a, there's a couple pieces to that. First, I'd like to mention that as of December, county council approved for us to have a contracted investment firm. Our long-term investment manager retired in January. We are now contracted with PFM Asset Management, who is one of the largest investment managers for government portfolios out there, and they are making investment decisions for us as of January. The county is still limited, and even our investment manager, to the investment policy that was passed by council. We last brought that policy in front of you about a year ago. We didn't really change much in what the county could invest in. We were trying to really fix a couple nuances, especially with the fire, firefighter volunteer pension plan, where we were being required to sell off our best-performing asset because we were reaching a market limit. So that investment policy that I was referring to limits what we can invest in, and we are invested in the highest quality securities, nothing equity. It's all... It's all debt-based. They're all either direct obligations of the federal government, so US treasuries, or guaranteed obligations of the federal government, which are called US agencies, like the farm, Federal Farm Bank, or Federal Home Loan Bank. There's lots of different government-sponsored enterprises that are backed up by the federal government, and they offer a little bit more return because of that layering that is not a direct treasury. And then we also have corporate bonds that we're lim, we're limited to how much we can invest in the corporate bonds. It's, I think, 25% of the portfolio, and the investment advisor does now pick whether that's a better option, given the risk versus the return. I'd be remiss right now to not mention something that you'll see during the five-year forecast, which is if you look at the estimate returns right now for this fiscal year that we're in right now, there actually is an investment loss. And that has nothing to do with the investments that we're invested in. It has everything to do with the timing of the market. You can invest in a treasury security that earns 1%, and then if interest rates go up to 2%, it loses market value. It's a full faith and credit of the federal government. It's still going to be worth $5 million if you invested $5 million when it matures, but because investment, because interest rates have gone up, the market value goes down. So if you hold it to, hold it to maturity, you still get your principal back, but if you were to try to sell that investment in a rising interest rate market, you would actually see a loss. So that market value loss on federally backed securities is what you're seeing when you look at those five-year forecasts, if you see an investment return that's a negative. That is expected to reverse. We are largely, even with our investment manager, still a buy-and-hold portfolio. So the market value changes eventually go away if you hold it to maturity. I don't know if I answered your question completely.
You did, and inadvertently, I think you just gave really good advice to the public who's, you know, they're seeing their accounts dwindle. Probably the best advice, I know you're not in the business of giving the public investment advice, but don't panic, hold on, ride it out.
Essentially, that's what a buy-and-hold portfolio in, for governments does, is you hold on to it so you don't lose that market value, because it is a federal security. It will eventually yield its face value.
Thank you. Anybody else? Danny Robbins.
Thank you. One of the, those questions that I, I have received in the last, or after budget season, actually here recently as well, and, and you hit on it, but if you can just clarify or just repeat, do we have $600 million sitting there for the taking in reserves that is not restricted or just money sitting there?
The, the county's total cash and investment balance at September 30th was 700 million, but it is accounted for in every one of the funds of the government. This pie chart kind of shows that in the visual perspective. The majority of those funds are restricted. You've got, in the special revenue funds, 230 million of the 700 million. So that means you've got your ECHO money in there, you've got your FOREVER money in there, you've got your gas tax money, your impact fees that are backing up a construction project that's in place right now, for example. You've got your FIRE district. All of those restricted funds are in there. So everything that's listed in our investment report is, our investment quarterly report is all of the cash that the county has on hand at September 30th, and it's all accounted for in the budget document.
Okay. And secondly, I've looked through the budget several times, trying to find, do we have a miscellaneous subject anywhere where there's millions sitting there, just unnamed, untracked purchases that aren't documented?
We do not track expenditures on a miscellaneous basis. All the expenditures have an object code, either personnel or operating or capital. We do track some revenues as miscellaneous revenues if they are smaller, infrequent nature, so that those revenues don't require separate breakout, and it gets to be too much itemization to mean anything.
So there's just not one big account that has 2, 3, 4 million in it where miscellaneous, it's a free-for-all?
All of the expenses are, that, no, all of the expenses are budgeted to each department and at object levels. It might, I have not flipped through and done a word search on the budget document. If there was a miscellaneous category, there would be an explanation as to what object code make that up. I don't think there is, but if there is, we would certainly be able to provide an explanation as to what rolls up to that level.
Okay. Perfect. Mark Gertman.
Thank you, Chair. I just wanted to get on the record the $1,784,980 that's unassigned out of a, what's our overall budget?
The budget, budget expenditures, including reserves, is one, around 1.1 billion.
So what's that come up to, 1%?
It would be less than that. It'd be 0.1% off the top of my head.
0.1%? Okay, okay. I, I think it's important for the public to know that so, so much of the assigned and restricted funds are really targeted at savings, right? It's, it's to reduce interest or to keep from having debt, or it's, and not to say that we can't make other changes and choices, but something will suffer from it, and we would have to determine what that something would be. So everything's on the table for discussion, but I, I think that's the real discussion, you know, what, what are we willing to sacrifice as we go forward? So I, I thank you. I thank you for making this as simple as you can make something difficult, simple and understandable, and, and break it out in a way that, that the public can digest it. And thank you for that.
Okay. I don't see any more questions for you or James Moore. Thank you for staying, Zach. Appreciate your report. I don't believe we need a motion to accept this. It's just a
It was just a presentation.
Report for, for information. Thank you. That takes care of item 11. We'll go back to item 5 at 10:59. A request for direction regarding an amendment to the zoning ordinance to allow the sale of agricultural products not grown on property, presented by Clay Urban.
Good morning. Clay Urban, Director of Growth and Resource Management. Several months ago, Councilmember Robbins brought the fact that we do have provisions in our zoning ordinance as it pertains to our agricultural classifications that require a special exception for processing, packaging, and the wholesale and retail sale of products not grown on-site. This is primarily in place to prevent more intensive commercial activities on agricultural lands going unchecked. Specifically, say, if, say, Lay's Potato Chips wanted to put a processing plant out in the area, that would require a special exception. The concern was that it had also trickled down to the point that if Farmer A wanted to sell his bumper crop on Farmer B's land, that they would have to go through this special exception process. So what we were trying to do is identify, first of all, that there is these provisions in place. The primary purpose was to make sure that agricultural uses were being protected on both the current and future land of, use of the land. Also to make sure that the scale and activity of any kind of commercial activity, such as that, would be in keeping with the adjacent properties and that there would be a public hearing process. We see that as a benefit for some of these more intensive, but some of the less intensive uses, such as I was saying, could be handled through another process. The way our zoning code is constructed, if within each zone, you have uses that are permitted by right, which means that there's no additional actions other than obtaining the appropriate permits to develop the land for those. Then there's a special exception. Special exception has criteria in our zoning ordinance, which requires a public hearing at our Planning and Land Development Regulation Commission and in front of the county council to ensure that the use is consistent with the adjacent properties and compatible with the adjacent properties. We also have something called a conditional use. This has been created over the last five years, where staff comes up with a set of criteria, and it is reviewed by staff and issued by staff, so therefore you would not necessarily have to go through the public hearing process, and it takes a much shorter time. What we're here is, if the council wants to keep the rules as is, that's fine, then we can work from there. If they would like us to explore the option of doing a conditional use for these lower intensity sales, we can do those as well. And if the council feels that we should allow for all of it to be allowed by right, we can do that as well. Staff does want to caution you that it does open up opportunities for much more intensive type of uses. And, and you know, the thing about it is, is Farmer A selling his bumper crop on Farmer B's property, if it's just taking up, you know, four or 5,000 square feet with a small fruit stand or vegetable stand, is not the same as saying a full-on farmer's market on all 10 acres of land that's owned by Farmer A. And so that's where we're trying to basically split the baby, so that that way we can allow for those less intensive uses, perhaps with a staff approval, but more intensive would still have to go through the special exception process. Whatever you decide and whatever direction you have, please be aware, we do have committees with the agricultural interests that we, any changes would be run through them, and we'd be coordinated through that organization to make sure that we are consistent with what their intentions are as well. If there's any questions for staff, I can be glad to answer them.
Danny Robbins.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you, Clay. And just to clarify, the, the main purpose of why I asked this was, was not to create a scenario that would impact any residential areas in unincorporated Volusia, you know, in terms of factories and all this. What it was designed to do, or what my intention was, to reduce some of the red tape and bureaucracy with this, help out our struggling agricultural community, and, and just eliminate some, some possibly unnecessary steps that, that folks have to go to, go through. And I, just typical me, I, I list out pros and cons to this. You know, we've approved, we did it for garage apartments, detached structures, we added food trucks where they can be placed throughout the county, and, and some of the stuff by right now. It appears that it supports our land ownership bill of rights. To what degree, Clay, I don't know, and, and council, I don't know in terms of option two or three on the, on the presentation. I do believe and agree with you, Clay, that there, there has to be some stipulations if we decide to go, so we don't create a, a bad situation or, or something out of control. But to be able to have a vegetable stand, a fruit stand, something that you see on the side sometimes of 44, peaches, peanuts, you know, and, and whatnot, I think is good. But it could eliminate staff time, we can save some money there, it can eliminate some unnecessary time for the landowners going through some of these processes, code enforcement, you know, for stuff that really may not be necessary. I don't know if it's possible, or the council consider tailoring a, a policy with stipulation to protect the integrity of our, our unincorporated areas from those flea markets type environments. Can we do a overall square footage or a limited, specific to our, our needs? I'm interested just to hear what the, the council is, but this is just to serve, and the goal is to benefit the community and get our kids outdoors as well and involved in, in some of these great things. And that is it.
Ben Johnson.
Yes, whatever we do, we want to be very cautious, because in the past, I know when I was sheriff, we had a problem at one time of all kinds of different items being set up on the roadway, created major issues. And if you travel around the southeast, you'll find a lot of places, it looks like a floating flea market on the side of the road, which really ruins the integrity of the area, downgrades it. I, I'm kind of more interested, I think this, this number three option might be one that we could work with, that it'd take and make it so that y'all come back with ideas for us, you know, to make sure we do take care of our property owners, our people who are growing on their property. But I don't believe that would just open it up all the way, would it, Clay?
Thank you again. And then on page 5-2, that's where you'll see there's three different options, and the first one was to continue with the current regulations. The second would be allowing them by right, and then the third was allow for some sort of conditional use concept. And that's where staff was landing, is that we realized that, you know, I'm full of cliches today, we didn't want to throw the baby out with the bathwater, so therefore coming in with a, a kind of a bifurcated system, that these lower intensity just generalized activities that you would see anyway out into the agricultural area. Because every farmer has the right to set up a stand and sell things on their property. The big issue is bringing product onto their site that wasn't grown there. So if we can sit there and look at scope, in other words, how big, how long, duration, location, and making sure that we are able to capture it so it just looks like a roadside stand appropriate for that activity, that's something that we feel staff can improve and will result in no negative connotations or impacts on the adjacent properties. If however, somebody comes in with a scope that is larger than that, looking at like a farmer's market, or doing something larger in regards to processing, then that way we can sit there and say, that's, that's over the limit, we have to take that through the special exception process. So then that way, adjacent property owners would be notified, and there would be a public hearing through the Planning and Land Development Regulation Commission and the county council. So I feel that that way we get both the concern y'all had with regards to making it easier for the simpler, more direct access to farm products, and then still keeping that process for the public hearing for more complicated items.
So you're talking about option three?
Option three, yes. Option three.
Okay.
Make a motion to accept option three for the staff to bring us back recommendations on the possible ordinance that we can examine and decide what we want.
Okay, we have a motion by Johnson for option three, second by Lowery. Danny Robbins.
I just, and Clay, you, I think you made some good mention to a list, and that gives us something to think about, too. I don't know if there's an acceptable list of agricultural products out there, or something that's defined by the state as agricultural products. I know it can range from horse saddles to pulpwood, you know, certain things like that. But like you said, scope, we can look at non-permanent structures, you know, like those little fold-out tents with, that aren't, you know, augered down or, or fixed to a foundation. And then two time limits to preserve the integrity of the neighborhood, and so it doesn't become bothersome or, or loud for the neighbors. But I'm on board with, with item three. If there's nothing else, I'm, I'm good with it.
Clay, I had a, a couple questions. I was actually leaning to, to item, to number two, but, but I hear, I hear the concerns and, and agree. I, I guess I'm looking at it as anticipating a, a time when we might have, I think we already do, have food deserts. There could be, I'll choose my words carefully, but it could be challenges with food. I like the idea of a farm being able to bring in produce or, or whatever from, from other people. I know when we travel to, to New England, there's farm stands all over. Some of them are just a stand, and they close it down the way. Some of them are much more permanent, complicated with, with refrigeration for dairy products, meat, whatever. They're, they're seen as a tremendous asset there, and they're even, they're a tourist attraction. When I'm up there, I'm a tourist. But I know that does open concerns for neighbors. It seems to work there. So I guess my question is, what, you mentioned the most intense, or more intense kind of agriculture that occurred. You said a Lay's potato chip factory.
Yes, sir.
What, what's the most intense that could be in item two to eliminate requirements?
Well, what we were saying is that you realize that the, the use is processing, packaging, and wholesale and
and wholesale and retail sale of agricultural products not grown on site. So we were trying to differentiate the retail sales from the other portions of it. So that that way, you know, the property owner and farmer has the right to do some basic retail sales. But if we started seeing much more intensive processing, in other words, employees coming in, setting up more of a factory, but the location is such that it's appropriate to have it out there and there's adequate access and adequate facilities, we should allow it, but we need to make sure that it's gone through a public hearing process is where your staff is landing. So again, primarily looking at the packaging and processing aspects of it.
It's like a meat packaging, sorry Jeff, would be discouraged? I mean, because that's...
No, it's not discouraged, it's just that it would have to go through the special exception process. So it wouldn't have to go, right now, it has to go through a special exception process. And I was working up in Flagler County when at one point Lay's was looking to locate one up, I believe off of 509 up there. It's again, one of these things that if you want to have much more intensive uses allowed in that agricultural zoning, y'all can tell us to do it right here and right now and we'll make it allowed by right. And then all that would have to be done is a site plan meeting or requirements would be approved by the development review committee and that there would be no public hearing per se on those conditions.
You better be careful about that kind of thing because what you can do is you have people who have jumped through all the hoops, got them a building, done everything they're supposed to do. And we've put them out of business by somebody putting up a tent on the side of the road that doesn't have to take care of all of these things.
Is that a different, I've heard you mention that a couple of times. Are you picturing the stands I see on seventeen ninety-two from Delion going to Deland, you see that somebody just set up on a corner of the road? Isn't that a different, whole different issue?
Well, they're not supposed to be selling in the right of way, first of all, so that's one of the main issues there. But yes, if you are sitting there technically, if you are setting up on private property and selling a product that's not grown on that site, that would be a violation of the A1, A2, A3, A4, and FR zoning categories.
So is that, is that what you're seeing, Ben, or somebody at a farm with a...
The ones on the side of the road are set by statute, you cannot do business on the right of way. So those right there can be actually code enforcement, law enforcement can pretty well take care of them. But what I'm talking about is making your farmer on the side of the road, which is kind of aimed at about getting it too broad to the point where they're cutting in to your retail businesses too. We want to make sure they can take and make a living and sell their products and even bring in a little bit, but not put out your Ernie's Market out here at Euclid, the truck route, who's worked for years to build something and then we can inadvertently, because they've got to pay, you know, the extra taxes, they've got to pay the rent or whatever, buy the building, and there's a lot more. We just, it's a walk that we want to take care of everybody. And I think it's number three that we can come back and look at and kind of keep it so we're balancing, we're balancing the act.
Yeah, I just wanted to be clear on what you were picturing. Clay, one other question before Danny has something else for you. So if we go with number three, does that keep all the current regulations and anything different would have to come for a special exception?
No, sir. The whole point behind it is that we would call out the lower intensity retail sales aspects of it so that that would be a staff approval only.
Okay.
Mr. Chair might ask, once they bring it back, we can look it over, but we don't like it. Yeah, we can throw it out if we don't like it, but it's a good starting place, I think.
And let me kind of clarify the process because we do have very specific requirements in our comprehensive plan, is that there's an agricultural committee that we're supposed to be working with. Anytime that we're looking at amending some of the codes or policies in our comprehensive plan as they pertain to the commercial. And I was talking with Stephen Crump yesterday about this. So that whatever your direction is to us today, we will bring and coordinate with them as well as taking it through your Planning and Land Development Regulation Commission. So what you're going to see is there's going to be a couple of different bites at the apple, another cliche. And what we're going to be doing is looking at coming up with a variety of different options so that that way, both the agricultural groups can come in and give us their feedback, the Planning and Land Development Regulation Commission will understand the intent, and then that way y'all will have final determination. And if there's something that you don't want and you want it changed, ultimately it's y'all's decision, we can bring it back however way you want us to go with it.
Okay, Danny Robbins.
Hey, real quick, I swear this is going to be the last one. How would this, would there be a conflict between the superseding statute for the Right to Farm Act with this? Or is this like a preemption kind of situation?
I see that Palos Auriya, our senior assistant county attorney is pushing me out.
There would not be a conflict with the Right to Farm Act. The Right to Farm Act applies for, one, bona fide existing farms in essentially saying you can't turn them into a nuisance. Basically, if you move next to a farm, you live with it. And also, it basically says that if there is a best management practices associated with the activity of the farm, then any contrary county rule or ordinance is void as it pertains to it. So here, the request is, you know, farm products or agricultural products grown on another farm seeking to be sold in another place. So there isn't a best management practices to that, we are not stopping the use of a farm, in fact, we're encouraging it, it's just where can you sell those products? So no, there wouldn't not be a conflict.
And will that allow us to create or tailor a list or identify agricultural products not produced on the property? You know, because there's a, it's not just limited to vegetables, there's numerous things.
Right, I believe we can, we kind of narrow that kind of scope for the conditional use that is done by staff and everything else can just be approved by special exception. So we're not completely shutting the door. If they want to sell something, an agricultural product that doesn't meet the list, they'll have to go through a special exception coming before you and then get approval that way.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Okay, I don't see anybody else that wanted to speak to it. I'm still, I'm still not a hundred percent there, but I do, I do understand and hear your well-thought-out concerns. So I think I'm willing to let it, it sounds like we get to look at it again anyway. I was kind of hoping to avoid that, not to have local farms have to come back over and over and it sounds like that, that won't be the case. So the motion on the floor is for item three. We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries five zero. Item six, request for direction regarding amendments to the zoning ordinance to address inconsistencies identified by a landowner in the Southwest Activity Center.
Good morning, Clay Irvin, Director of Growth and Resource Management. And joining me is Carol McFarlane, our Director of Planning and Development. In February, staff and the county council received a letter from the Ford family regarding property that they own is in the Southwest Activity Center. The Southwest Activity Center is located on the west side of I-4, on both sides of State Road 472. This is approximately four hundred plus acres that was part of a larger eighteen hundred acre master planned area that initiated actually in nineteen ninety with the adoption of the original comprehensive plan. The intent was to work with the cities of Deltona and Deland, who had property at that time, to come up with a master plan so that that way, all the local governments could work towards making this area poised for basically employment-based development. The whole goal was to provide that live-work-play area. There had been success over in Heathrow and that area, they felt that this would be able to carry over into Volusia County from Seminole County. And so therefore, there was an exhaustive planning process that resulted in two thousand and three with the adoption of a master development of regional impact, an area-wide DRI. And all cities joined in, everything went fine, and then the economy crashed. So we had this large master development planned out. The city of Deltona, I believe they exited out of the DRI agreement in two thousand and ten. The city of, Orange City, who had actually annexed portion of our area, basically released that DRI in two thousand and fifteen. And subsequently, Deland and Volusia County did as well. But working with the property owners, we were able to come in and say, we went through this exhaustive planning exercise where the county expended funds for a planner to come in and work through all of this, let's not throw away all the work. So what we worked with them on doing was creating very specific comprehensive plan policies in our adopted future land use element. Those were included in your packet beginning on page six dash six. And that is the amendment packet that we sent in two thousand and eighteen that was ultimately adopted. And that is what we are working from today. Part of that, it laid out the land use and what was required from the comprehensive plan. But one of the things that we also had to do was create zoning categories. So we created two different categories to correlate with the master plan that was approved. And on your screen, it shows the current land use and the current zoning. And what you see is there's a community district, which is primarily your residential with some limited retail and office. And then the commerce district, which has everything from corporate headquarters to a variety of different other uses. The zoning is SWR, which stands for Southwest Activity Residential, and SWC, which stands for Southwest Commerce. In doing the zoning, there were two things that apparently staff did not pick up on in making sure that there was consistency between the comprehensive plan and our zoning ordinance. The first one that was pointed out was pertaining to a specific use that's called out, and I believe on page six, what was that, six dash ten, I believe, is where you can see that within the, excuse me, six dash eleven of your agenda packet, that's where, within the commerce district, we identified warehouse distribution as a use that could be allowed in that area. Unfortunately, when we drafted the Southwest Commerce zoning district, we did not include that as a permitted use. So what this means is that under the current zoning, the property owners could not get that by right and would have to go through a planned unit development rezoning in order to get that used. The property owner is requesting that we go back and amend the Southwest Activity Center Commerce District to be consistent with the comprehensive plan and allow for warehouse distribution as a use that would be allowed on this property. This is generally consistent with what has been stated in the comprehensive plan. And from a staff perspective, we can see that there may have been an oversight on our behalf and not particularly catching that use to be included in the zoning classification. So just to kind of recount what their current options are, if anyone wanted to come in and develop a warehouse distribution center on either side of 472 within that area that you see with the SWC, they would have to go through a rezoning to PUD because it's not allowed by right and they would have to go through that process. So the council has basically three different options. The first one is keep things the way they are and therefore, the property owner, if they get that type of use programmed or proposed for it, they would have to go through the PUD. Second would be to go ahead and allow warehouse distribution as a permitted use and we would go back and amend the zoning for the SWC to allow warehouse distribution as a use by right. The third option would be to strike warehouse distribution from the comprehensive plan. This is an option that we have to identify. It's not necessarily something that staff would recommend because of some of the concerns that would come by, by going through our private properties review, consistent with our adopted private property element, because at that point, we would be restricting uses that were otherwise entitled by the original comprehensive plan and subsequent amendments. That's the first question that has been posed by the property owner. The second pertained to the SWR or the residential area. In the comprehensive plan, we have put a minimum density. So I want, again, I want to make sure everyone understands it's a minimum density, they have to have a minimum four units per acre for any single-family development that they go forward with. In the zoning, the SWR zoning, we've required a seventy-five hundred square foot minimum lot area, seventy-five feet in width, hundred feet in depth. The problem is by mandating that minimum seventy-five hundred square feet, they will never be able to meet the four units per acre. And why is that? Because when you come in and you are going through a development application to subdivide land for residential development, first of all, we require you to construct and install either public or private right of way, so therefore, there's access to that. Second of all, all storm water has to be on site, so you have to be able to treat and meet our minimum storm water standards as well as being in compliance with St. John's River Water Management District. And if you're having to deal with total maximum dealing loads, you also have to meet those standards. Then third, we have a minimum fifteen percent natural vegetation retention area that we require for all sites. So in other words, right off the bat, fifteen percent of your area has to be put in so that you're preserving some of the existing vegetation on site so that that way, we can maintain that integrity. When you look at that, that approximates to at least thirty to forty percent of the site being utilized. Once you take that away from the ability to get the lots in there to meet the seventy-five feet width and seventy-five hundred square feet in area, you can never meet the gross area of four units per acre. So in this particular situation, there's, again, three options have been identified by your staff. One is to keep things as they are and require them to come in through a PUD process to request the smaller lot size in order to meet the compliance for the four units per acre. The second is to amend your zoning so that the minimum lot area would be fifty feet by a hundred feet or five thousand square foot minimum. Or the third option, which again, staff is not necessarily a hundred percent behind, you could reduce the minimum density from four units to two units per acre. And the reason why we're concerned about that is if you look at this area, it's supposed to be intently developed. It's the area that we're trying to do compact urban development so that that way, we have a mixture of single-family, multifamily, office, retail, industrial, commercial, all of that in this one area. And we feel that, you know, coming in and having those minimum densities will help us attain that type of community in this area. The property owners who are requesting this are available and they will, I'm sure they'll speak today. If there's anything for, questions for your staff, we'll be here to answer those as well.
Danny Robbins.
Clay, where is this in reference to the T.G. Lee, the milk factory there?
It's right on it. You can see, it's basically, T.G. Lee is right there off of 472, it's surrounding it.
And is this what they're looking for? Is this consistent with everything around it?
Well, I mean, to the north, you have Deland and they have a variety of residential going on up there. To the south, you have Orange City, which has also got a variety of residential. Deland is also to the east. And so what we're seeing is that the area around 472 is becoming much more developed. If you look at the land uses that are in place and the adopted comprehensive plans for both the city of Orange City, Deland, Deltona, and unincorporated, you can see that we have similar intentions. I just want to kind of like point out, when you see the land use, and you see right there up at the upper left-hand corner, you see the city of Deland, then on the south side of 472, you've got UMI, which is Urban Medium Intensity, which is a minimum four units to eight units. Then you see ULI, which has got a development pattern already in place because many of these areas are already developed at urban low intensity. And many of the projects out there range from the four units per acre on down. Similar type of development pattern is occurring. You can see just where you see community district, you can see all of the existing lots that are currently within the city of Deland as part of the projects in there. And so again, this is generally consistent with what's been intended. This is a planning effort that's been in place since nineteen ninety. That's the critical thing, is that we've been... That's the critical thing, is that we've been working through, first of all, some just generalized ideas in 1990, drilling down in 1994, coming up with a local plan. And then in 2003, adopting a development or regional impact for the area that unfortunately, the timing and the market did not pan out. So we don't want to throw away all the efforts that have been done over the last several years to get this going.
My concern was, has there been any talk in the neighborhood or folks around there to, I mean, would this create any other impacts? Or anything like that? Has any of that been a discussion or come up?
In other words, like pending other requests?
Right.
Yeah, to the west, we've been receiving requests for both land use changes and zoning changes to the west. That, a little bit further off, it's not shown here, but there's some areas that folks were looking at trying to get either higher intensity for multifamily and those types of things. We've expressed some concerns with regards to those, but right now, we've not received a formal application, no.
But this does conform with the municipalities around it, ideally? Because that's one of the things that we were talking about last workshop, you know, of better aligning with the cities so we can all work together a little bit better. I just want to make sure this isn't like a shock factor where it gets thrown back in our lap when we're trying to work better with others, you know, for efficiency purposes.
I appreciate, please remember, back in 2018, this was a large-scale comprehensive plan amendment. So it had to go through the Volusia Growth Management Commission. So this whole plan was sent to Deland, Deltona, Orange City. All, actually, all of the cities within Volusia County went through the Volusia Growth Management Commission. We did not receive any kind of concerns, questions, or comments. And the main reason is because we were utilizing the existing entitlements that were already on the books. We were not trying to intensify it. We were not really modifying anything at all in regards to that. So this is, again, something that has been out there. And we've, we actually had to go through and coordinate with the cities of Deland and with the cities of Deltona and Orange City. And, you know, the water and sewer service area south of 472 is within the city of Orange City, and on the north side, it's within our area. So all of utilities have been coordinated. There are specific transportation improvements that have been identified. There's specific limitations on what their development can be before they have to go through and do, go through the concurrency review. They're required to have, basically, trying to come in with the best environmental standards they can, if you look at the policies that are currently in the adopted comprehensive plan.
Ben Johnson.
Basically, this is trying to fix something that we messed up inadvertently. And I think it's only fair. And one thing we have, we have a major four-lane road that's already built for the traffic heading into I-4, which when you take distribution centers, what you want is close to the interstates and major roads. You know, it's something that was inadvertently left out. We've got standards set in place that, so we make sure we keep green areas, we keep our water quality areas, and going back to where you're putting more people in a smaller area rather than spreading them out and have them, you know, the spread all over the county. I think it's kind of a no-brainer, we need to go ahead and fix this issue, and it's a pretty simple fix. And I'll make that motion that we add the distribution center and drop the lots to the 50-foot, 5,000 square feet.
So your motion is to change the language in the comp plan to allow distribution centers? And then on the second inconsistency, to allow the 5,000 square foot lots? Okay. Clay, did you need to say something, Paolo?
Yeah, we were just making sure, it's an amendment to the zoning ordinance to add the use of warehouse distribution to the SWC.
The comp plan allows it now. The comp plan allows it currently, the zoning doesn't.
Right, so we would have to do an amendment to the SWC zoning to allow that use, and then make it an amendment to the community, to the SWR zoning to change the minimum lot size from 50 feet width, or down to 50 feet in width and total 5,000 square feet in area.
Okay, just a couple of questions. Apollo will probably come rescue you in a minute, maybe not. And Alex Ford is here. I would like to, and we will hear from him before we vote. Kind of struggling with the warehouse thing after going through the Amazon and the neighbors and the traffic and the, just lots of traffic issues. And, you know, I'm very familiar with that area, and I'm picturing all the semis, depending on what kind of warehouse it is. We have, we have no idea. And yet, there is a, there's that tension between property rights and how my property rights affects everybody around me. So we have to consider that. I just, I wish that, I want to hear from Mr. Ford, how critical a warehouse is to this. I would really like to see something other than a $15 an hour warehouse job if we're talking about creating jobs and something more high-tech. But my question for you is at the end of that paragraph, whatever page I'm looking at, says this is, if we, if we don't allow the warehouse, it says, "This is problematic since it may be interpreted as a taking of a permitted use and may trigger a legal challenge." But we're here because it's not, it's not allowed right now. So how could we be sued if we?
If you have a conflict between your comprehensive plan and your land development regulations, the provisions in your comprehensive plan prevail.
Right.
So we have called out office warehouse as a use as specifically allowed within this specific area within the Southwest Activity Center. By eliminating it, we are taking away a use that's been called out specifically in the adopted comprehensive plan. Right now, we can say that it's, can be allowed by the PUD. The big question is, you know, do you want to have to make the property owner go through the rezoning to PUD? Or do you want to make sure that the zoning category of SWC is consistent with the wording in the comprehensive plan? When you take away, again, Paolo's probably the best one to describe what's going on in regards to the legal issues, but anytime that you have something called out specifically in your comprehensive plan that's an entitlement, taking it away has some potential impacts.
Just to add, that specifically pertains to eliminating that use altogether from both the zoning and the comprehensive plan. As Clay described, currently, your comprehensive plan sets your long-range list of allowable uses. So, you know, your zoning doesn't have to one-to-one match your comprehensive plan. They would have to rezone to PUD if they wanted to use the distribution center, you know, as the way our code currently stands. But if you remove that use, you're potentially impacting what's called their investment-backed expectations. And if you do, and if you, if that's interpreted as an inordinate burden, that could potentially subject the county to a Burchey-Harris liability. Essentially, our recommendation is do not remove it from the comprehensive plan, but whether or not you allow it by right in the Southwest Activity Center Commerce District or have to make them go through a PUD, that's kind of the decision of this council.
So there's, that's actually another option, to have them go through the PUD? Because right now, they can't do it because there's this inconsistency.
They would have to go through the PUD. They can't do it by right under the current zoning district that is, that has that list of allowable uses. And you can't, you know, you can't add uses to the list of allowable uses.
Thank you. I have another question, but Ben, I see your name up, I'll let you.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, you know, we've had quite a conflict over in Daytona where the subdivision is right next door, and they actually, the traffic merges together. But, you know, we have one of these distribution centers right across the highway. And at first, people talked about it, and since then, we've not heard a word of complaint about the merging trucks coming out. And this is another straight-in shot, but it's like, the traffic is not merging from the same... It's not apples and apples, this is apples and oranges. So there is some difference right here about how the traffic is merging in versus what's going on over on Bevill Road.
Great, you're correct. I'm just, I guess I'm seeing, how many? How many distribution centers? How many giant warehouses? And at what point is it a, is it a huge problem? That's why I'm really interested in hearing from Mr. Ford. Danny?
Thanks, Chair. I mean, Commerce District not allowing commerce, I mean, it's kind of like a shoe store not allowing shoes. I just, fits the bill. It can't honestly have a better location if this was what it's intended to do in the municipalities, and ultimately, that's who we supplement, you know? God almighty, it's right by the interstate. There's, I don't see how we can say no to this. The shoe fits, it's what it was designed to do. And I don't know that it's specifically up to us to, it's not our place, in my opinion, to be able to say, oh, there's too much of, you know, this can't be here, but this, when it was designed to do that, in other words.
Okay, it apparently is up to us because here it is before us, and we have to deal with it. And I'm trying to look down the road, trying to consider the needs of the current landowner. And one other thing, Clay, on the, on the density. If we approve the 5,000 square foot lots, how does that affect the amount of? Because the whole purpose of high-density, lower-impact development is that you leave more undisturbed land. Does that, do that here? Do we maintain the 30 to 40%, which in?
Well, right now, pardon me, real quick, let me, they have current vestings for upwards of 1,939 dwelling units of multifamily and 220 single-family. Those can be changed out based on trip comparisons. So what has been stated in Southwest policy, Southwest 1.3.7, is building design, construction, and operation shall incorporate green building practices to promote energy conservation. So there's not a specific mandate to require 30% open space instead of the 15% that we typically require, that is in our current code. But they are required to be utilizing green building standards. So it would have to be done on a site-by-site basis determining what resources are there. If you have an open pasture that didn't have any wetlands on it, then obviously, you have fewer resources to protect. Whereas if you have a heavily vegetated site with wetlands, that would be something that staff would be looking to try and encourage them to do the clustering development so that that way, they would avoid impacts on those resources. So it's going to have to be on a case-by-case basis, given the existing natural conditions on the site.
Okay, so I think the answer I just heard was, what we're doing is increasing density, but no, there is no requirement for.
We're not increasing density, say, we're changing the land development standards to allow for the density that's already permitted on the site.
If it's already permitted, why are we here?
Because, again, the minimum density in the comprehensive plan is four units per acre. We have a standard that doesn't hit four units per acre. So you have a conflict between the zoning and the land use. Land use is the one that we would, you know, go through. And they would have to, at this point, similar to the last discussion, they would have to go through a PUD process to amend the minimum lot width and minimum lot area in order to meet the comprehensive plan. So we're saying, do you want to give them the option of being able to go by right with a sized lot that implements the policies of the comprehensive plan?
Okay, one last question. On the overlay, on page 67, there's a map that shows, I think it's supposed to show flood zones, wetlands, ponds, or any kind of, but there's nothing on it. How, is there a picture somewhere that actually shows what the hydrology of that land is?
Well, what you look at, that is the flood zone, so there's no flood zone areas. What you would do is look at the soils over there on page six dash 68. And what you see is that we've got a variety of soils throughout the 400-plus acres from Apopka fine, Estatula fine, Basenger, Cassia, Mokeli, Taveri's. All of those are highly draining soils, they're very sandy. Would also look at where the groundwater is. So therefore, they would have to go through all of that analysis in order to get their subdivisions or site plans approved.
Are there any water bodies on it?
Yes, there's some, there's some open water.
I don't, haven't seen it on the slide.
This gives you an idea of the aerial, as you can see, I believe there is a small open, there was somewhere identified as small open water on the site. Mr. Ford can address that. But as you can see, there's portions of it that have been cleared, and this is a somewhat older aerial, and that's, because this was back from 2018. What you're going to see is that areas have been cleared as well because of the current agricultural use that's allowed on the site.
All right, I don't see any other questions from council. Alex Ford, would you like to?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, council members, Alex Ford, 145 East Rich Avenue. The water body, there is a very small, we call it a wet weather pond. There's probably a hole that does maintain water year-round, but it's actually off of this area. It's adjoining property we own, and I think that's, and there's also a little, which I think is also outside of this district, some property we own on the south end, where a little seep goes down into probably a little sinkhole or something, we call it a spring. It's really not much of a spring. But I don't think either of those water bodies are on this property. And I want to defend staff a little bit against what Mr. Johnson said. I don't think at the time that we went through this process, I'm not even sure if you had the distribution center classification at that time. You may have, I'm not sure if you did or not. I did a quick check, and the only place I found that is in, I think it's the airport zoning category, which is a fairly, I think, itself a fairly new zoning category. So I'm not sure that was actually a mistake. It was clearly intended that this property, part of this property could be used for a distribution center. And I'm just not sure that there was that permitted use set aside at that time. The Commerce District contemplates all different forms of manufacturing and industrial-type uses, which we think the distribution center is kind of the same sort of thing. And your comprehensive plan also feels that, also reflects that. So as far as the protection for the neighborhood, we do have this community district that kind of wraps around, which would not allow the distribution center in that portion of the property. And going back, when we went through this process, kind of the idea was, this had been, as Clay mentioned, an area-wide DRI. And I can't remember, over 1,000 acres. And through various processes, property's been developed, property has been annexed, property has been taken out of the DRI. We got down to the point where, at that time, I think we owned, I think I, I think it was like 98% of it. And I will say, we own 100% now of the undeveloped portion of it. There's that apartment complex, Integra Dunes, along MLK, which we had a hand in that development. And then there's the cement plant and a, I guess, a building supply. I don't know if you'd call it yard, but everything else in this district we own. So we were going through the process of, how do we address this? I think actually, county brought it to our attention, that we need to do something about this, and county staff. And basically, the idea was, let's go ahead and write all the standards that we think should apply, and then... And then, you know, it's, it's like a poor man's PUD. Um, you've already got everything in place. We've established the standards. We were in agreement with them. We had actually a lot of, uh, back and forth with, with staff, legal staff and planning staff. And that was the intent of it. And so, uh, we have had, uh, a lot of people looking at this property for years. Nothing's happened. Um, and now we feel a multifamily, uh, development there. So kinda the idea is to allow a transition, uh, down to the, the Commerce District. And we feel the 50-foot lot size does that quite well. I mean, you're looking at city land now, um, not immediately to the north, but I think some of there, they're going to 38-foot. Uh, are there even some 36? 36-foot lot width. So we feel this is very consistent. If you have any questions, we'd be happy to answer them.
Is the, is the Commerce section going to be, um, do you anticipate general retail, or is it, is it gonna be a, a warehouse facility?
There's a component that allows that. Um, and we're not end-users. We're, we're, we're raising cattle out there right now and hay. Um, so we don't have a specific end-user who we were under contract with to do any kind of industrial development or anything like that. Um, so it's, we've had, we've had people approach us and some pretty, pretty interesting concepts, but, uh, nothing that we're committed to at this point.
So you're just trying to open it up as wide as possible for as many different, uh, uses as you can?
Well, for that one additional use.
Right. Um, so you won't be the, my next question, I don't think you can answer. I was gonna ask if you anticipated a, a development where you would go in and, and basically clear-cut all the acreage and, and, uh, what is?
Near, um, but I've, I've heard explanation, in fact, I think including your county engineer, about the difficulty nowadays with the current development requirements of, of, other than specified areas leaving, you know, trees. Now, this property, a good bit of it has, is in pasture. Um, so I wouldn't call it clear-cut, but there's a good bit of it that's, and there's a lot of.
I like pasture.
Right. Yeah. There's, there's a lot of, uh, wish, wish we had that good pasture up there like y'all have on 11. Uh, but, uh, this is just basically ball-bearing sand for the most part. It's not real good for, uh, it's, it's, you can raise hay on it cause you don't have to worry about the wet weather. But, uh, um, anyways, that's off the subject. And I've taught my way out of remembering what your question is.
Uh, you're, you're, you're good. You, you, you answered it. Um, so it, ultimately, Clay, this comes back again to us. As a, whatever the end-use is gonna be.
Yeah, yes, sir. Just kinda go through the process. Depending on what the direction is from the council. Based on the, uh, motion and the second, we would have to go back, make amendments to the zoning regulations, take them through the Planning and Land Development Regulation Commission, bring them back to you for, uh, formal adoption. Because it does pertain to the, uh, permitted uses within a zoning that would be two readings. And so, um, what we would do is then after that, any development that comes in, depending on what they're looking at doing, we either go through your Development Review Committee for approval of the subdivision or site plan, or if they needed to go through a planned unit development rezoning, they would have to go through the Planning and Land Development Regulation Commission and ultimately you.
Okay. Any other questions for the council? Okay. So the, uh, the motion on the floor from Ben Johnson is to, uh, to amend the, uh, the zoning to allow the Distribution Center and then to reduce the, uh, square footage of properties from 7,500 square feet to 5,000. Did I state it clear enough for you? Okay. Apollo didn't shake his head no? Okay. All right. Um, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? We'll see you again. It's not even noon yet. Yeah. Because Tad's already here. Item seven, propose a vacation of a portion of the plat of Fox Run Unit One. This is interesting.
Good morning. Tad Kasebeer, County Engineer. This is a, uh, request from a petitioner to vacate a portion of Fox Run Unit One, specifically the section of Pecan Drive right-of-way, south of Gardena, within that subdivision. That road area is unimproved and the plat to the south did not accommodate the future extension of that road and has lots to the south of it. So, uh, both the property owners on either side have agreed that, uh, they'd like to do this. Staff has reviewed it. Utilities had no, uh, no comments. There were no comments from the.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Gertman, second by Robbins. Looking for your name, Danny. Any, uh, discussion? I think this is an easy one. Um, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries five to zero. You know what? What are you here for? For eight?
Yeah. Yes, sir.
Master plan goals. Um,
Well, this is beach concessions. This is an ordinance.
This should be, this should be quick, I think. You think so too? You're hoping. Okay. All right. Let, let's knock this one out. Item eight, um, ordinance 2022 dash 20, beach concessions.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Members of council, Paul Osoria, Senior Assistant County Attorney. This is, uh, ordinance 2022 dash 20, Beach Concessions. Um, this is, and this is the only slide. Uh, this amends, uh, Chapter 20 to be consistent with the beach agree, beach concessions agreement. That is the next item. Um, it's a companion to it. It kinda fixes some of the things. It specifically calls out portable fire pits, um, which is, you know, the council directed them to, uh, make available as a vendor for rent. Um, it clarifies some of the things that they're proposing to rent, like electric surfboards, exactly what you think it is. Um, some considerations for display of merchandise so that they can actually have a stand. Um, and update some outdated language because the last time this was amended was in 2010. Um, so it transfers over the concessions to coastal when previously it was, it was beach safety. Um, and with that, um, staff recommends that council adopt ordinance 2022 dash 20.
Can I get a motion to approve?
Motion, second.
Motion to approve by Johnson, second by Gertman. Any other questions or discussion? All in favor, say aye? Motion carries five to zeros, which means we, we really need to take care of item nine right now. Um, award of contract to Beach Rentals and Refreshments of Volusia County LLC.
Good morning. Jessica Wentworth, uh, Centrus, sorry, um, Coastal Director of Volusia County, whatever, answer anything. I bring to you today, uh, a contract with Beach Rentals and Refreshments of Volusia County LLC for the beach concession contract. It will be effective October 1st this year. Um, providing an early approval would allow them to expend some funds with their vendors and make some pretty significant capital purchases and sign agreements with subcontractors as well. We have Melanie Nordstrom with us, the President of the Beach Rentals and Refreshments of Volusia County LLC. If you have any questions, if you remember, on January 6th, you guys selected, um, this vendor to proceed with the concessions for our beaches.
Second.
Motion to approve by Lowery, second by, um, who wants it, Ben or Barb? Second by Gertman. And any other discussion? Before we vote, I think you see which way the vote's gonna go. And I would just, you, you have, I, I think you have, we'll see. But I think you have unanimous, wholehearted support of this council. And we are really excited and looking forward to, um, to beach rentals and refreshments of Volusia County, going and making the beach experience, not just for us residents of Volusia County, but for all of our visitors, um, a, an exceptional experience. Um, more fun. I'm glad to see some of the new things that you're offering, that you're adding. Um, so let's take a vote and see if I'm, if I'm right. You have anything else? You're just waiting with anticipation. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? And the motion carries five to zero. Go to work. Okay. Um, apparently everybody's ready for a break. Oh, the county attorney sums up. Why don't we, we'll take a, uh, a lunch break. It's noon, um, till 12:45? Okay. We'll adjourn until 12:45.
This is Volusia Today, a public information radio program brought to you by the County of Volusia. Here is community information Kevin Captain.
Good morning and welcome to Volusia Today. I'm Kevin Captain, the county's community information director, and you're listening to Volusia Today. It's made possible by our sponsors, the Daytona Beach International Airport, the Ocean Center, Volusia Recycles, and Votran Public Transportation. This morning, I'm, I'm joined by, joined by co-host David Hunt. He is a marketing and communication specialist with the county's community information division. Good morning, Dave.
Good morning, Kevin. How you doing?
I'm doing great. So if I know you, you're probably up and, and you already probably did maybe 10 miles on the trails already this morning?
Oh, well, it's hard not to with all the wonderful trails we have in Volusia County. Um, they're just always calling my name. So I gotta get out there on the bike and get the exercise in. And it's just good for the mental health and, uh, body just feels better afterwards.
Yeah, it definitely does. And you take advantage of that. I know you, I know you'll take the bike out at lunch and, uh, bike 10 miles. It's crazy.
The 10 miles, try to do it daily, but it's not just the trails. Here in Volusia County, we got a lot of great beaches, great events, a rich history, but our biggest draw is the year-round fantastic weather that keeps our residents outside and active. But if you've lived here for any period of time, you know there's a menace out there, no bigger than a thumbnail, that's ready to ruin all of it, the mosquito. You know what I'm talking about, Kevin?
I do. I, I got bit a couple times last night, just in my backyard.
Well, today, we're lucky enough to have Miranda Tressler and Marcus McDonough in the studio with us to kinda give us some tips and just kinda give us a rundown of what's going on with mosquito activity in the area.
Excellent. So we have Miranda Tressler. She's the Activity Project Manager with Volusia County's Division of Mosquito Control. And we also have new with us on the show, Marcus McDonald. He's the Director of Volusia County Mosquito Control. Good morning, Marcus. Good morning, Miranda.
Good morning, guys. We're happy to be here.
Excellent. So, uh, Marcus, if we could start off with you, first, first time on Volusia Today. Uh, you spent some time in the U.S. Navy as an entomologist, not an entomologist, but an entomologist, right? Uh, what was it like? Tell us about your background.
Uh, well, before I joined the Navy, um, I worked for the state of Indiana, uh, their nursery inspection program. Uh, prior to that, I was at the great Purdue University, Boilerup. And, uh, got my degrees in entomology, um, both bachelors and masters. Um, you know, in the Navy for 10 years, traveled around the world, saw lots of different stuff. And you know what? Everywhere you go, mosquitoes are a problem.
It's all over. So, uh, June 19th to the 25th is Mosquito Control Awareness Week. Uh, in the county's control, mosquito control division, you have a lot of outreach events planned for this week. Tell us about them.
Well, we have a fun-filled week where we're gonna be traveling throughout the east side Volusia County Mosquito Control District area with our Fight the Bite educational trailer. So all of our events are posted, um, on our Facebook page and on our website at volusia.org forward slash mosquito. But you can catch us, um, on Monday morning. We're gonna be in New Smyrna, at New Smyrna Dunes Park kicking off the week.
Cool. And wide outreach, I'm, I'm gonna jump around here, cause you got some virtual events as well that you can go into. But, but wide outreach, why is that such an important factor to what, what y'all do?
Education is a huge part of our program. So we have what's called an integrated pest management program. We're targeting the mosquitoes at all stages of their life. And a critical thing that we can do is actually prevent the areas that produce mosquitoes. So a lot of the areas that produce mosquitoes are right around your house. Um, one of my favorite tips and tricks is to tell people to take a walk around their yard and look up, down, and all around for anything that could be holding a small amount of water. You can actually help us reduce mosquitoes by taking that short time to walk around the yard and dump out standing water.
And, and that's so important. We're gonna jump back to that. But first, tell us a little bit about the virtual events you got planned for next week.
I have two virtual webinars scheduled. The first webinar is gonna be on Wednesday, the 22nd. It's at 11:00 AM and it's gonna be a mosquito biology webinar. We're gonna talk about the life cycle, how mosquitoes grow and develop in different habitats, where you find them, a little bit about the history of mosquito control and the importance of it. Um, and you can sign up from that webinar on our website. We have the link or on our Facebook page. The second webinar is gonna be all about integrated pest management. We're gonna highlight the components of our program, surveillance, mosquito trapping, identifying mosquitoes, how we treat them, our aerial program. We're gonna go through all the steps in that webinar. And that is on Thursday at 11:00 AM. The registration links for that one are also on our website and on Facebook.
And, go ahead.
I remember in a, in a last show, you had mentioned about how many different species there are of mosquitoes worldwide. And then how many affect, uh, just Volusia County and, and Florida? Can you, do you know those stats off the top of your head?
Yes, in Volusia.
Of course you do.
Volusia County, we have between 30 and 40 different types of mosquitoes, just depending on the year. And all of those mosquitoes are different as where you find them, um, what habitats they prefer, and whether they can transmit, um, pathogens that cause disease or not. Not all mosquitoes are bad. Some are actually good. Some don't even bite people. Um, I brought some examples of mosquitoes in the studio today, so you can look up close and see, they come in different colors, shapes, sizes. Some have stripes, purples, silvers, golds. Those are dead, but these ones are alive here. I brought some mosquito larvae, so you can see what baby mosquitoes look like.
For those of you listening who don't know, Miranda Tressler has a bug collection at home, plus a mosquito collection at work?
I think Marcus, uh, my new director, I think his insect collection puts mine to shame, though.
Uh-oh.
I, I mean, I've been collecting since I was eight years old, so.
Wow.
Had it for a while.
So what do you have at home besides mosquitoes?
Oh, I got a little bit of everything, um, from a little bit of everywhere.
I bet, cause you've, you've been, you've been all over the world with the Navy.
Yep. Been in the Navy and some beforehand, but, uh, you know, beetles, moths, butterflies, um, stink bugs. Pretty much anything you think of insect-wise, I, I have some, some semblance of it.
And they're super, all of them are super interesting. They all have super interesting facts. Just off the top, just to get people more interested, give me your three top mosquito facts that might be surprising to somebody.
Ooh, um, one of the largest mosquitoes that we have in Florida is Toxorankites. It's actually a mosquito that can't bite people, but in the larval stage, it preys on other mosquito larvae. So we'll actually have like Tox Fight Club, where we take Tox larvae and we feed them against other mosquito larvae so they can fight and eat each other.
That's interesting.
That's probably one of my top, my top mosquito facts.
Really wild, weird, sick game.
But, um, another thing, right now, we have some new mosquito control inspectors. We're doing a lot of training, um, and a review of mosquito biology. So like I said earlier, in Volusia County, we have between 30 and 40 different types of mosquitoes. Um, there is one particular type of mosquito, Anophiles. In the larval stage, it can actually rotate its head 180 degrees.
That's wild.
That's like an exorcist.
I, yeah, I usually refer to it, yeah, as like an exorcist scene. Uh, I actually took a video of it and put it on YouTube. If you're interested, check that out also.
Yeah. Dave, you're gonna have to get that URL. You gotta check that one out.
Yeah. Every time I go over there, I'm blown away by just the, uh, the operation. And y'all use fish too? all use fish, too. Can you tell us a little bit about the fish?
Yeah, so Gambugee are used as a biological control of mosquitoes. So we have Gambugee that we put out in abandoned pools, neglected pools. We get reports from code enforcement, and we'll put the Gambugee in the pool. Gambugee will eat the mosquito larvae, and they'll prevent the biting mosquitoes from coming off until somebody purchases the home and cleans the pool.
And those are actually native to Florida, so we're using native species to control the mosquito population.
They look like little guppies, don't they?
Pretty much, yeah.
Yeah.
So win-win, all the way around.
Yeah, the public can actually put requests in for fish. If you have a site that you think might be useful for mosquito fish, or you want them for your own yard, you can put requests in on our website, volusia.org/mosquito. There's an online request form. If you have mosquitoes at your house, and you're not sure where they're at, if you need help finding them, or you would like some fish, you can submit a request on there.
So if a resident were to put in a request because they've got an overabundance of mosquitoes in their yard, what is that process? I mean, obviously, you just said, go online, you fill it out, but do you guys come out? Does it matter, city versus unincorporated? How does that all work, depending on where you live?
So Volusia County Mosquito Control operates in three different service levels. If you live on the east side of the county, you live in the East Volusia Mosquito Control district. That's our primary service area. On the west side of the county, the unincorporated areas receive service through the general fund, and then the west side cities like Deltona, DeLan, DeBarry, Pearson, Lake Helen, those ones, we have agreements with. We can do services in those cities at a lesser level. But if you put a request in, we're going to send an inspector to your house, and we're going to try to figure out what's going on. We don't just send a spray truck because somebody put a request in. We have to actually investigate and see what the problem is and verify that it's mosquitoes causing that problem.
And sometimes they can just handle it themselves, like you mentioned earlier, just tipping, walking around with the resident, looking for...
Anything. Kitty, kitty pools are a big one. Water tables, right now, with it being summer, a lot of people have pools and different toys outside for their kids, holding water, making sure that you're dumping those out at least once a week to break that life cycle. But potted plants, those little saucers, the drain saucers underneath potted plants, clogged gutters, sometimes even tree holes in your backyard can breed mosquitoes.
Interesting. You know, I love the landscape and be out in the yard, and it seems like I'm pulling weeds a lot, but I also have bromeliads, and I know you've mentioned them before. And I like to have a Florida landscape that's native. I understand they're a native plant, but should I get rid of them, or are they growing mosquitoes?
Oh, I'll let Marcus answer that one.
Well, getting rid of them is up to you. There is, they do have the potential to breed mosquitoes in them, but not, it's not necessarily breeding mosquitoes in there.
Okay.
I would tell you to shovel them up, but a lot of people do appreciate their bromeliads and-
Well, they look cool, and they also are a natural habitat for like frogs and other animals, not just mosquitoes, right?
Yes, there are some species of frogs that can live in the pools of water that live in them. I also like bromeliads, so that's why I'm also hesitant to say tear them up.
Sure.
But that's one of those things, there are, you know, it's just one of those risks that you're gonna, that you have to accept, that, you know, if you, if you choose to have bromeliads, you may have mosquitoes that you are breeding.
All right, well, I'm keeping them. Because I know my wife likes them, and she says, I don't get her flowers anymore, but as long as I have flowers in the yard, that's good. So I'm keeping the bromeliad. So we're talking with Miranda Tressler and Marcus McDonough from Mosquito Control. We'll take a quick break, and when we come back, we'll talk about repellent of mosquitoes. Stay with us.
Volusia County is our home. If we don't respect it, who will? Litter is a problem, one that we can solve, but it's going to take all of us working together. Litter is not only an eyesore, it's also terrible for the environment, and can be detrimental to our health, to our quality of life. Any container that holds standing water, including trash and litter, can turn into a mosquito breeding ground. Many of these mosquito-producing havens can be found in our very own backyards. We should all clean up litter because of exactly what we're talking about. Mosquito breeding on sanitary conditions, but at the end of the day, it comes down to respecting not only the environment, but the men and women and the families that you live around. And one of the biggest culprits is discarded tires. Did you know Volusia County hosts Tire Amnesty Day events? During these events, up to 20 residential tires can be dropped off and disposed of free of charge. In addition to disposing of old tires, residents can help by picking up trash and litter around their house, tipping over containers weekly to remove standing water, and tossing containers not in use. What matters is that we all do our part. Don't be a litter bug, and pick up litter when you see it. Every litter bit counts. Keep Volusia beautiful.
Today, a public information program brought to you by the County of Volusia.
Thanks, Dave. So let's talk about mosquito repellent. There are so many different products that are out there. I personally don't like using them. My wife says that she's sweet, and she's gotta spray all over, you know, just to get the mosquitoes off. But I heard once, I don't know if this is a wife's tale or not, I'll admit I've tried it, I don't think it works, but to like use a dryer sheet or something like that on your skin, is that really, does that, is that a repellent for mosquitoes, or someone pulling my leg?
We recommend using EPA-approved repellents. So there's a variety of active ingredients that you can look for in repellents at the store when you're shopping, and these are repellents that are proven to be safe and effective at reducing mosquitoes. We have a link on our website, too, where you can actually go to an EPA search tool, and you can put in the information about what you're going to be doing outside, and how long it can help you find different repellents to buy. So we have some repellents on display on our educational trailer, too. If you catch us at one of our Mosquito Week events, we can teach you a little bit about different examples of repellents.
What about the stuff that is candles or the fogging in the spray? Do they, the stuff that you can buy at, say, you know, Lowe's, is it effective, or is it more of a...
Those products can work. You want to use them in conjunction with a dermal application. They will work, but you have to think about, you know, the weather around you. Stronger wind is going to be blowing that cloud of protection away from you. So different times of the day, you may get better protection from them. But if you use it as part of a holistic approach, you're, you're wearing your topical repellents, you have those going outside, you are mindful of the time of day, more in the morning and evening, kind of dawn, dusk is when mosquitoes are most active. So those are the times. And also, I know, it pains me to say it because it's so hot outside right now, but long sleeves and long pants also help protect you from getting bitten from mosquitoes.
I'm sorry, Marcus, you're breaking up.
I even have a tough time with that one, and I know what it can do for me, but man, you know, outside at this time of day, even just working in the yard, the long pants and long sleeves are tough. So definitely the topical repellents-
He's definitely not accustomed to Florida yet, no.
I'm an Indiana boy initially. I did, I did live in Florida for a little bit, but it's been a while, so it's-
Just give it till September, you'll be ready to go. It won't affect you at all. Well, I'd be remiss if I didn't ask about peppermint. Does peppermint do anything, or...
One of the active ingredients that is recommended is the oil of lemon eucalyptus.
Okay.
That one is EPA-approved and tested for repelling mosquitoes.
Okay, because my wife's over there just mixing up all these concoctions, and I'm like, I don't know if this works. I'm gonna have to check with Mosquito Control and find out.
Some of those do work. You just may have to apply them more regularly.
Right.
More frequently than you would with some of the DEET or the Picardin or some of the other products. And the EPA, and I believe the CDC also has a website that you can look at to help you pick a repellent, and then it'll tell you how long it's good for and when you should reapply.
Well, I think she puts so much stuff in there that whatever she's, is working, but who knows what's in there, you know?
What about citronella?
It can work. Again, that's what's a lot of the active ingredient, a lot of the candles and the tiki torches and stuff that you have out, is the citronella oil. And again, it comes down to, it does work, but, you know, you have to think of wind and wind direction, and, you know, whether it's blowing in your area. It's not, doesn't really put that dome of protection around you.
Gotcha.
But it can provide some relief, and not all the time, but sometimes.
Interesting.
So we got our long sleeves on, we got our EPA repellent, we're still seeing a lot of mosquitoes. You all do plant spray operations. Can you tell us a little bit about the spraying and that whole process?
Yeah, so as part of an integrated pest management program, all of our operations are based on data. We set mosquito traps throughout the county, and we're looking at what types of mosquitoes and how many, and we look at the trends of those populations all year long, and we use that to make decisions about where we're going to treat in those areas. So you can look on our website, we have a public map where you can see the areas that we have planned to spray at night. Those are updated every day based on the information that we're getting in from the field. We also have a few bird friends, sentinel chickens that we have throughout the county, and those help us make a lot of those treatment decisions as well.
Because the chickens, now, you use them to monitor for some of the viral infections and the issues that mosquitoes will transmit.
Yeah, so-
What are all those?
Some mosquitoes have the ability to transmit diseases that might make you sick, but not all of them. And some of those diseases are actually local here in our wild bird populations. So we sent sentinel chickens out. They get bit by mosquitoes, and they develop the antibodies to those viruses. The chickens themselves don't get sick. So we're looking at West Nile virus, St. Louis encephalitis, and Eastern Equine encephalitis. We take blood samples from those chickens weekly. They get sent to the state lab, and they test for those antibodies, and then we make decisions based on where we're seeing those viruses start to trend. And those viruses are already here local in Volusia County. We expect them to peak at different times of the year, and we're just out there watching for it.
I want to know how many times she had to say it, to pronounce it right.
Right.
Long viruses, definitely.
We normally abbreviate them, too.
So when you get, when you get a positive sentinel chicken with an antibody to, let's say, one of the encephalitis viral infections, what do you do?
So I'm going to look at that area, and I'm going to look for Culex mosquitoes, because our Culex mosquitoes are the ones that were potential vectors for like West Nile and SLE. And we're going to look for the habitats that Culex live. We're going to look at our mosquito traps and see how many we're getting, where we're finding them. And then we're going to start to apply larvicides to the water to try to kill the mosquitoes in their baby stage before they become adults. And then we'll treat at night to kill the actively flying adults, which is called adulticide.
So I live in unincorporated Volusia, and just maybe about two weeks ago, one of the mosquito control county trucks came down the street. It was at dusk, and it was, it was hitting the spray. And honestly, it was at a perfect time, because I knew that they were getting bad. But I think that what you're saying is it proves the point, you're not just, you know, randomly going on the calendar with some cadence to say, okay, I'm going to hit Ormond by the Sea next week, but you're doing it based on-
Based on data, yeah. So in your area, we actually had a salt marsh hatchoff that was quite large, and we had to do an investigation to figure out where they were coming from, where we missed them at. And we did end up finding the site where the adults had came off. It was too late at that point to larvicide, but we were able to send the truck up into your area and adulticide to get those flying salt marsh mosquitoes. And those mosquitoes are particularly aggressive. They will bite you day or night. They will find you.
Yes, I said some expletives when I got there.
So you're monitoring all the time, you're spraying. The biggest question we get is, what are you spraying?
So we're using a variety of EPA-approved products. These products are tested to be safe, and we have very specific instructions on how we apply these products. So they have labels with specific directions on how we apply them, where we apply them, how much. We have state licensed technicians that are applying these products, and as long as we're following all of those label directions, our products do not hurt people, pets, or the environment. We actually live here, too. This is my home. This is my director's home. A lot of our coworkers have grown up in Volusia County, like me. Our families live here. We want to protect our communities for our families. We want to protect the tourism for Volusia County. We want people to come here and visit us and enjoy our beaches, enjoy those bike trails, and not get bitten by mosquitoes.
Yeah, I hear it all the time, that if mosquito control isn't here, we'd, it'd be a hard time living on the coastal, the coastal line, for sure. So you all do a great service, and you're really helping protecting us, because it's not just a bite thing, it's a public safety thing and a public health thing, is what you're talking about.
Yeah, public health. We're here to protect the people, and we work in collaboration with Department of Health to respond to disease cases when they do happen.
And you have, you also have, I understand, an aeronautical background, because you went to Embry-Riddle, but speaking of aeronautical equipment, you have two helicopters, and most helicopters have a tail rotor. The cool helicopter, where I think it's cool, is that yellow one. It's got no tail rotor. It's much smaller and shorter, but the maneuverability that you have with it is incredible. Tell us about that.
So if you're on the east coast, especially in that Oak Hill Edgewater area, or up in Ormond Beach near Tamoca State Park, you have very likely seen the MD-500 yellow NoTAR helicopter. That helicopter doesn't have that tail rotor at the end. It essentially has like a big tube that pushes the air, and it circulates instead of having a tail rotor. And we actually land that in the marsh, and we sneak it into little areas on the islands, so that the inspector can dip the water and check for mosquito larvae.
Amazing. Amazing equipment to make your jobs easier.
And when you go there, it's almost like it's, it feels like a military operation. Is there any crossover between the two, Marcus?
I mean, in a loose sense, maybe. We do have actually several, several people at the, at the mosquito control who are prior military. So that may be part of the feel of it. But apart from that, I mean, we're planning a mission. We're, you know, looking at all the variables and executing it, and, you know, making sure we have a successful, successful run.
And safe operations.
Yep.
We're talking with Marcus McDonough and Miranda Tressler. We'll take our last break with Volusia Today, and come back and wrap up today's show. Stay with us.
Mosquitoes can develop in as little as one bottle cap of water. That's why it's so important to tip and toss any standing water around your home at least once a week. Let's check out a home and see if you can spot all the places a mosquito could lay at. Did you spot them all? Everyone plays a role in protecting our community. Do your part to help fight the bite.
After recent heavy rains, mosquitoes are on the move. Did you know that if a container can retain water, a mosquito can lay eggs in it? A small amount of water can lead to big problems. Take a walk around your property and tip and toss any standing water. Be a buzzkill. Put a stop to mosquitoes.
Mosquitoes will bite day and night, so protect yourself with these tips. Keep mosquitoes outside by shutting doors and covering windows with screens. Use EPA-approved insect repellents anytime you're outdoors. Cover your skin with long sleeves and pants. Mosquitoes lay their eggs in water. Just a bottle cap of water is all they need. So drain, refresh, or cover anything around buildings that can hold water at least weekly, and put away outside items that aren't being used. A message from the Florida Department of Health.
You can access Volusia County Government online at volusia.org. Listen to county council meetings. Pay for permits or tags, or search the property appraisers databases. Volusia.org is your Volusia County Government information resource.
Hi, this is David Hunt with Volusia Today, and we are back in the studio with Kevin Captain.
Thanks, Dave. So in our last two minutes with mosquito control, I like to sometimes ask, you guys live and breathe mosquitoes. So when you're not working in the division with mosquito control, what are you guys doing?
So recently, I've been hitting some of the trails in Volusia County, but I do get very distracted walking those trails and biking on those trails when I see standing water, or I see a flying mosquito. My daughter, too, she's almost three. She can look for mosquitoes as well. We were at the zoo, and we found mosquito larvae in one of those water gardens last weekend.
I see another future mosquito control employee being-
Right.
Marcus, how about yourself?
You know, I enjoy spending lots of time outside, hiking, fishing, being at the beach. So taking my family out there, they appreciate the fact that we provide the mosquito control as well. And I do have trouble completely walking away. I was actually, now my son's swim lessons over the weekend, so I saw a big pool of water standing on a playground. I was over there looking, seeing what might be in there. It was only tadpoles, no mosquito larvae, so we were good there.
That's a good deal.
And it rubs off on you, because I've done some work with you all in the past, and now I find myself going around and dumping out water I see standing and telling my wife, we need to dump this water out of just rain, there's going to be mosquitoes. And that's a good reason to come out to the mosquito control awareness event a week.
Yes, next week is National Mosquito Control Awareness Week, and we have a fun-filled week of pop-up events with our Fight the Bite educational trailer. We're going to kick it off on Monday morning. We're actually going to have Councilmember Danny Robbins come and read the proclamation at Mosquito Control to our staff, and then we'll head out to New Smyrna Dunes Park. But the full list of- But the full list of events is on our Facebook and on our website at volusia.org/mosquito. We're going to be in New Smyrna Beach, Daytona Beach, Oak Hill, Ormond Beach, and in Daytona Beach again on Friday to wrap it up at Bass Pro Shops.
Excellent. That's Miranda Tressler and Marcus McDonough on mosquito control. That wraps up Volusia Today. Take care, stay safe, and help your neighbors.
If you have a comment about Volusia Today, or if there is a topic you would like to hear featured, please contact Volusia County Community Information at 1-866-345-0345.
Volusia County is a beautiful place to live, but if we don't respect our own home, how can we expect other people to? We have a litter problem in Volusia County, we're literally trashing our own environment. But it's a problem that we can solve if we all work together. Today, I'd like to talk to you about one aspect of keeping our environment clean, and that's stormwater drains, maybe something that you don't think about all the time. Everything comes down this street and goes into these drains. Fertilizer runoff, lawn pesticides, even household chemicals as people wash their cars, all of that washes down here into the drains. We need to be more careful what goes into our stormwater drains, and then it goes into this beautiful lake out here. It's organic, but it still is a problem in our lakes, rivers, and streams, it adds excess nutrients that causes algae blooms. That's why Volusia County has a Stormwater Drain Marketing Event. You can go to volusia.org and learn ways to help keep these clean, but we have to work together. What matters is that we all do our part. Don't be a litter bug, and pick up litter when you see it. Every litter bit counts. Keep Volusia beautiful.
Volusia County is our home. If we don't respect it, who will? Litter is a problem, one that we can solve, but it's going to take all of us working together. Something as simple as discarded fishing line causes many tragic entanglements of wildlife that often suffer from starvation, loss of limbs, and even eventual death from infections or ingestion of the line. It is a serious litter problem, especially around boat ramps and fishing areas. Did you know that monopole element recovery stations are placed over 100 locations across the county? Please use them, and if you really want to make an impact, we're looking for individuals and groups who feel a connection to the environment to adopt a container and monitor it on a regular basis. I do believe over time that people respect our environment more and more, and I believe that our litter problem has become less, but here we have a major issue, discarded cigarette butts on our beaches and in our parks. When I see someone picking up litter, whether it's an adopter road, adopter highway, or adopter park, or just working on their own, it shows me a citizen who has pride in his community. Your contribution can be big or small, what matters is that we all do our part. Don't be a litter bug, and pick up litter when you see it. Every litter bit counts. Keep Volusia beautiful.
Volusia County is our home. If we don't respect it, who will? Litter is a problem, one that we can solve, but it's going to take all of us working together. So when I see people picking up trash, you know what I think? Matter of fact, what I know is that they care. They know what a clean environment means to our families, to our community, and to our county. Sadly, there are numerous illegal dump sites around Volusia County. Cleaning up these sites costs the county and our residents more than $100,000 annually, and you can help. Don't illegally dump tires, trash, or hazardous materials in our environment. Take them to the landfill where they belong, and if you see any illegal dumping site, please report it. What matters is that we all do our part. Don't be a litter bug, and pick up litter when you see it. Every litter bit counts. Let's keep Volusia beautiful.
Sun Flash Park, Daytona. Incident occurred on the town.
Now, 221, light traffic water, responding, 521.
840 Central. In route drowning, and have fire roll close to it at this time.
223, special copy of water rescue. University approaching, Daytona Beach, we got one guarding the water at 4.
We are not ordinary people, we know this, we run into the chaos and everybody else is running away.
So when I see people picking up trash, you know what I think? Matter of fact, what I know is that they care. They know what a clean environment means to our families, to our community, and to our county. Sadly, there are numerous illegal dump sites around Volusia County. Cleaning up these sites costs the county and our residents more than $100,000 annually, and you can help. Don't illegally dump tires, trash, or hazardous materials in our environment. Take them to the landfill where they belong, and if you see any illegal dumping site, please report it. What matters is that we all do our part. Don't be a litter bug, and pick up litter when you see it. Every litter bit counts. Let's keep Volusia beautiful.
Why did I choose EMS? I chose EMS because to someone, this is the worst day of their life, and they called me, so for me to be able to show up, it's just amazing to be able to help people when they're in need. I've always had a passion for helping others in need.
It's a good feeling that you know you've saved somebody and you helped somebody, and it's like a life-changing to them and to you as well.
Being a student at Daytona State, I did get a lot of hands-on experience, and it's very much inspired me to continue going forth and helping others.
I live in Volusia County, and I grew up here, it's a great county to work for.
What does excellence, quality, and commitment mean to me? Well, it means having pride in your work and being able to stick to it no matter what through the very end and give the very best that you can.
Volusia County EMS, excellence, quality, and commitment.
If you have a passion for helping people, definitely come join VCEMS. We are a loving, caring group, and we want to succeed and help our community even more.
This is the best job that I have ever had and could ever imagine having, there's nothing better.
All right, it's 12:48, we will resume the June 21st county council meeting, and we are on item 10, Contract with Halifax Paving Inc. for the Graves Avenue Turn Lanes and Safety Improvements. Mr. Tad Casbeer.
Good afternoon, Tad Casbeer, county engineer. As the agenda item, Tad all states, this is a construction contract award for the work on Graves Avenue, where we're adding a continuous turn lane from Kentucky over to Veterans Memorial Parkway. It also includes other safety improvements, extending the existing turn lane on southbound Kentucky, and adding a second left turn lane on Graves to southbound Veterans Memorial. So the recommended award is to Halifax Paving for 1.1 million. This money is all grant-funded through DOT Safety Funds.
Motion to approve by Johnson, second by Robbins. Any questions or discussion? Okay, we barely have a quorum, this will be interesting. All in favor, say aye. We'll give her a chance, this is item 10. Aye. The ayes have it, motion passes five to zero. Takes us to item 12, Emergency Medical Services, Library, Ponce de Leon, Port District, Echo, Volusia Forever, and Mosquito Control, five-year forecast for fiscal's year '21, '22 through '25, '28.
Twenty-six.
Twenty-six. I need new ayes.
Good afternoon, Council, Aaron Van Cleek, Management Budget Director. So today, we are going to go over the five-year forecast for the funds you just mentioned, and then next council meeting, we'll continue the five-year forecast presentation and get into some other funds. So, five-year forecasting, so our taxing funds are forecasted and presented in council chambers annually. Other forecasts, other funds are forecasted as needed. We do forecast for the airport, Transportation Trust, Ocean Center, VOTRAN, various other funds. They're not always presented in chambers, but they are included in our annual budget document, so they are available for review. Each forecast shows the current adopted year, the estimate for the current year, the upcoming budget request, and then the forecast years, the three subsequent forecast years, that are based on our growth assumptions. The growth assumptions are based on historical trends, industry recommendations, and anticipated changes. The expense assumptions are applied by object code, and they range anywhere from 1.5% to 4% depending on the specific item. Some of our sources for our assumptions include the U.S. Energy Information Administration, the Bureau of Labor Statistics, the United States Postal Service, the Office of Economic and Demographic Research, and the Congressional Budget Office, to name a few. What you see here is the actual forecast document with all the numbers and categories on it, so it gives you a categorical look at the revenues and expenses by year for the EMS fund. The top of the document shows the revenues, the middle of the document is where all your expenses are laid out, and then the bottom would show your reserves. Each forecast is constructed slightly different, but the main structure of revenues at the top, expenses in the middle, and reserves at the bottom are consistent. You can see in the EMS fund, based on the FY23 budget request and the growth assumptions that we have, the fund will have a reserve balance of $9.1 million by the end of the forecast period. There is an annual use of one-time money, that fund balance, to fund capital outlay purchases in FY24, '25, and '26. So here is the additional staffing that is being added to the EMS operations throughout the forecast period. The total cost that's shown under the addition total cost column, that is the total cost for all four years of- include the U.S. Energy Information Administration, the Bureau of Labor Statistics, the United States Postal Service, the Office of Economic and Demographic Research, and the Congressional Budget Office, to name a few. What you see here is the actual forecast document with all the numbers and categories on it. So it gives you a categorical look at the revenues and expenses by year for the EMS fund. The top of the document shows the revenues. The middle of the document is where all your expenses are laid out, and then the bottom would show your reserves. Each forecast is constructed slightly different, but the main structure of revenues at the top, expenses in the middle, and reserves at the bottom are consistent. You can see in the EMS fund, based on the FY23 budget request and the growth assumptions that we have, the fund will have a reserve balance of $9.1 million by the end of the forecast period. There is an annual use of one-time money, that fund balance, to fund capital outlay purchases in FY24, 25, and 26. So here is the additional staffing that is being added to the EMS operations throughout the forecast period. The total cost that's shown under the addition total cost column, that is the total cost for all four years of adding the personnel and equipment required. And so the staffing relief, this request is for positions based on the staffing relief factor. It seeks to cover average hours that an FTE is absent from post due to benefit leave hours, FMLA, vacation callouts, and it is, it's being added to reduce overtime, mandated overtime within the operation, so it should reduce our overtime cost as part of the addition. The growth and demand is just to meet the growing demand of our population and our transport needs, and that does include an ambulance and the required equipment to go with it. Alternative transport, currently alternative transport is functioning out of the general fund through Emergency Medical Administration with an EMT that is on loan from EMS. So this addition would add the EMT to the operation for alternative transport and then move it into the EMS fund out of the general fund. The alternative transport, it provides a vehicle, a non-emergency vehicle instead of an ambulance, to a citizen that is unable to find transportation to a medical care facility. And then the support staff that you see at the bottom, this request is based on productivity analysis. As we continue to add more ambulances to the system, there is a need to add the support staff that is responsible for keeping them functioning, the cleaning and stocking, supplying of the ambulances. Also EMS is requesting an accounting specialist for daily processing of invoices, the IETs which are internal transactions, and assist with capital assets. This slide here gives you a comparison of fiscal year 21, 22's adopted revenues by category, and it compares it to the fiscal year 22, 23 request by category. So in EMS, the overall total budget change is a 22.6% increase with fund balance increasing by 59.5%. Ambulance fees, they are the largest revenue source in this fund. This revenue stream is estimated to increase by 12.1% or $2,69,445. This calculation is based on the collection rate of $369.64 per transport, and that is our net collection. And then it's multiplied by the estimated transports for fiscal year 23, which EMS is estimating at 55,053 transports. And that is based on historical trends and slight growth. The transports grow in the forecast years each year by 1%, so the revenue does grow with them based on our net per-transport amount. Bad debt recovery, which is another revenue source you see on there, stays flat, and that is, that's because it is included in the ambulance numbers when we do that calculation, because bad debt is just ambulance transport revenue that has gone beyond the collection, the normal collection period. The management fee, this revenue is derived from EMS billing operations for municipal transports. So EMS billing does all the transport billing county-wide, so when the cities perform transports, a portion of that transport revenue is retained by EMS as a fee for performing the billing. And this revenue is estimated to increase in fiscal year 22, 23 by 19.5% or $63,558. Appropriated fund balance, which is our savings from prior years, that revenue is up 59.5% or $5.1 million. This is, excuse me, this is our savings from prior years used to fill our reserves and make one-time purchases. At the November 16th council meeting, council approved a transfer of additional sales tax revenue that we had earned in fiscal year 21 in the amount of $1.1 million into the EMS fund, which contributed to the increase in fund balance. And then the other large revenue source to speak of is the Public Emergency Medical Transport, or PEMT program revenue. This revenue is estimated to increase by 57.1% or $1.7 million. PEMT was expanded in fiscal year 2019, 20 to include managed care organizations, which qualified EMS as a recipient, and Ryan had the foresight to get us into the program. And so under this program, we pay the state to participate, and then we get the federal dollars from the program. The payment comes from the general fund, which is why you see a reduction in the general fund subsidy. The general fund subsidy is a reduction of $551,000 as that payment in the general fund is increased, so we lower the subsidy amount by that increased payment in the general fund, so it keeps the EMS subsidy from the general fund flat, as we're paying a little bit more in PMT, but we're getting a large amount more of PMT revenue. And so you can see that's growing to $4.8 million in '23, and the PMT program has really been a huge benefit for the EMS fund as far as a revenue generator.
Can I interrupt you one second? Because I'll forget. But you're saying some interesting things. I noticed back on the, I think it's the third page, 12, 3, you, you're rolling back the millage rate, and it's, there's a steady rollback from the next four years. Is that a result of this, the decision to go into PMT? Is it based on more ambulances, better collection, all of the above?
So a little bit of all of the above, right? So the revenue is growing in all those other areas, the PMT specifically, which is helping us keep the general fund subsidy flat. You're seeing the millage rate decrease because our taxable value is estimated to go up. So as our taxable value is estimated to go up, the millage equivalent will naturally fall, sorry, naturally fall if we're keeping the amount that we're subsidizing flat. So if we were to raise that number or lower that number, it would change the millage rate as well. But just the natural growth of our taxable value that you'll see on some future slides, that's what allows that.
We're working hard to not subsidize anymore with that. Are collections of ambulance fees, are they improving? Is it still, well, I don't want to add words, but...
I'll answer that in just a second. I do want to clarify that that is a millage equivalent. The EMS fund does not levy its own millage. We like to, the funds that depend on the general fund for their funding, which includes economic development, EMS, and Votran, when we present those forecasts, we like to show a millage equivalent so that you know how much of the millage rate from the general fund is actually going directly to these other funds. As far as our billing and collections rate goes for EMS, we are steadily on the rise. It's a slow rise as far as percentage-wise goes, but when we compare ourselves to other peer organizations, we do have a better collections rate than a lot of our peer organizations do. Naturally, when you, when you're billing and medical billing, especially for those patients without insurance or a government program like Medicare or Medicaid, you do have quite a few people that do not pay. We do forward those to the debt collector. That's what that bad debt collection revenue was that's listed there, and the debt collector takes all legally available steps to try to collect on those.
Thank you.
All right, so next up, we do a categorical look at the Emergency Medical Services expense budget, again comparing the fiscal year 21, 22 adopted budget to the 22, 23 request. As is the revenue, since the funds have to be balanced, the total budget change is 22.6%. Reserves are increasing by 63.3%. So...
No offense.
Includes our shelf.
We had to take a recess. Whose, whose job was it to pay the electric bill?
Where's Ryan at?
The bill's paid. I'll get Ryan.
That's the emergency generator.
Well, I came back up quick.
That's Daryl's electric personality.
I think we should probably take a couple-minute break or recess to make sure that everything is okay.
Okay. It's 1:01. We'll recess to 1:03.
All right. So as I was saying, this is a comparison of the 21, 22 adopted expenses to the 22, 23 requests. Personal services is increasing by 9.6% or $2,46,157. This increase includes a wage adjustment that has been applied to all funds currently of 4% or a dollar per hour. Now, in the EMS fund, obviously, they are largely union, so those negotiations would affect the actual increase. It also increases medical insurance costs by 6%, and that is the cost for our group insurance. And then the Florida Retirement System rate increases are included in that increased number, as well as the additional staff that we discussed on the previous slide. So that is all-inclusive in your personnel increase. The operating increase is 9.4% or $580,292. The largest increases to the operating expenses in EMS is fuel at 45% or $202,215. Maintenance of equipment at 23% or $219,380, and then medical and surgical supplies at 6% or $71,283. Capital outlay increase is 25.8% or $351,856. That increase is due to the growth and demand addition that we saw on the last slide. It's the ambulance and some of the equipment that's required to go with that. And then, as I mentioned, reserves are increasing 63.3% or $5,474. And then remember, reserves are made up mostly of our prior year savings, but we are adding $422,000 of new money to the reserve balance in fiscal year 22, 23 in the EMS fund. While we have the increase in FY23, we are using the reserves in the future years, as you saw. So just to fund financial health, the EMS fund's financial health, as we did the analysis of the EMS fund, it shows that it has sufficient revenue to meet its ongoing operating needs until fiscal year 25, 26. In FY26, you start to see a little bit of the operation use one-time money to fill some of its ongoing operating needs, and that's just based on current assumptions. However, there is a great chance that our PMT revenue could grow beyond what we currently have programmed in the forecast. I think the max the program was estimated to grow to was just over $7 million, and so if we get to that level, that fixes that last year. So it's, it's not as much of a concern, it's just something we need to keep an eye on as we, as we work towards that year. And then, as I said, of course, increases in personnel costs beyond what is forecasted could have an impact on the financial health of this fund. Without other revenue increases, it could require an increased subsidy from the general fund. Finally, the need for the new building, the new EMS building that we talked about at the capital presentation last meeting, is not funded in this forecast, but we are still seeking the alternative funding through the BRIC grant that we spoke about. And so if we can utilize that as a funding source, that would be fantastic. There would still be a 25% local match required, which, building a reserve balance, that's what we could use the reserves for.
Is that separate from the workstations we've talked about? Are they funded?
The funded, the workstations were funded through ARPA. So this slide gives you a categorical look at the revenues and expenses for the library fund. The library fund is presented at the estimated rollback rate for fiscal year 22, 23, and the estimated rollback rate in each of the future years based on our growth assumptions, which I'll discuss on the next slide. I say estimated rollback rate because the property appraiser is the one that sets the rollback rate, and so this is currently my estimate, which is going to be pretty close, but just throwing that out there, the rate could be slightly different when we get to July and start talking about what the rollback rate is. Following the same structure as our other forecast, top's revenue, middle is expenses, and the bottom shows the reserves. You can see in the library fund, based on the FY23 budget request and the growth assumptions, the fund will have a reserve balance of 4.3 million by the end of the forecast, with the majority of those reserves being the 10% emergency reserves per council policy. So here you can see the change in taxable value for the library fund. Fiscal year 22, 23 is based on the preliminary numbers at this point from the property appraiser's office. Official values will be provided no later than July 1st, so we'll have those numbers. The preliminary numbers show a 13.1% increase in taxable value for fiscal year 23, with 2.3% of that increase related to new construction. It's important to note that when we're applying the rollback rate to the taxable value, the new construction, or that 2.3%, is the only revenue growth that the county is taking advantage of. The 10.8% represents reassessments, which includes home sales, but the rollback rate does not take that growth into consideration. The total taxable value for the library district is just over $48 billion, with new construction valued at 1.1 billion. Just to note, the revenue difference between a flat millage rate and the rollback millage in the library district is $2.4 million. And you can see in the forecast years, our assumed growth is listed at 8%, 8%, and 7.4%, with new construction at 2.2, 2.2, and 2.1. Obviously, the future growth assumptions, they can be debatable the further out you try to predict, but these assumptions do remain on trend with what we've seen in current years. And at the continued rollback rate that we're presenting in the library fund, the only number that really matters is that new construction number, because that's really all you're taking advantage of each year. So these pie charts compare, again, the fiscal year 21, 22 adopted budget to the 22, 23 request in the library fund. There is a total budget change of increase of 3.4% or 1.1 million. However, the millage rate is a 9.5% rate reduction. Ad valorem taxes are up 2.1% or $451,786, and that is due to new construction. A new source, a new revenue source for the library in FY23 is the emergency connectivity funding from the FCC in the amount of $385,290, and the ECF will provide relief to library patrons and help close the homework gap for students who are currently lacking necessary internet access or the devices they need to connect to classrooms through increased Wi-Fi hotspots provided by the library. And so you'll see that expense increase on the next slide, and it's related to that revenue. State aid to the library, provided under Florida Statute 257, is increased for FY23 by 20.8% or $58,379. Charges for services are up 41.2% or $34,000. Miscellaneous revenues, which include rental of meeting rooms, vendor commissions, and donations, are up 25.2% or $11,300, and library contributions and endowment funding is up 29.1% or $21,790. And then finally, the appropriated fund balance, which again is our savings from prior years, and the funding source for our reserve balance, is up 1.3% or $121,231. Again, this slide gives you the comparison of expenses, 21, 22 adopted to the 22, 23 request. Your personal services in library is increased 3.7% or $415,409. This increase does include the wage adjustment, the increased medical cost, and the FRS rate increases. Operating is increased 6.8% or $600,545. The largest increases are communications, which is increasing 94.4% or $291,312, and the computer software, which increases by a large percentage, 312% or $304,300. The communication increase is directly related to the ECF funding that I spoke about on the last slide, and then the computer software increase is due to the Integrated Library System Software Contract that is coming to an end and will be bid out prior to the current contract ending. The additional cost is the estimated cost to migrate to the new software, and then other increases in operating where offset decreases in other areas. Your capital outlay is decreased 53.2% or $214,000, and capital improvements are decreased 37.2% or $472,000. And capital improvements are decreased thirty-seven point two percent or four hundred and seventy-two thousand dollars. These categories fluctuate year to year based on the capital plan and the equipment needs in the libraries. Interfund transfers are flat with fiscal year 21-22, as we continue to build savings for the Port Orange expansion and the Daytona flood mitigation projects. And then reserves are increased nine point eight percent or seven hundred and fifty-four thousand nine hundred and fifty-two dollars. And the increase is due to the savings from the prior year, as no new money is being allocated to reserves in fiscal year 22-23. So a complete review of the library fund shows that the fund is in good financial health. The fund is forecasted with an annual rollback rate based on the current growth assumptions. And there is sufficient funding for the ongoing operating expenses, and the library capital needs are fully funded throughout the forecast period. And then in addition, the ten percent emergency reserves are maintained per council policy in all years. So then we show ECHO, this is the five-year forecast for the ECHO fund. And again, this slide gives you your categorical look, and ECHO is presented at the flat millage rate of point two mils, and that same flat rate is carried out in future years. It has the same structure as the other forecasts, your revenues are at the top, your expenditures are listed in the middle, and your reserves are listed along the bottom of the document. You can see in the ECHO fund, based on the FY23 budget request and growth assumptions, the fund will have a reserve balance of twenty-nine point two million dollars by the end of the forecast period. The change in taxable value for the ECHO fund, ECHO shares the same tax base as the library, so I'm not gonna explain it again, but I'm just showing it for reference, it is the same assumed growth in ECHO as library. Your revenue budget comparison, ECHO is mainly ad valorem taxes and then appropriated fund balance, which would be prior year savings. Your ad valorem taxes, based on the flat millage rate, are gonna increase by twelve point nine percent or one point one million dollars. The miscellaneous revenue is increasing by one point one percent or nine hundred and eighty-five dollars, and that is mainly your investment income. An appropriated fund balance is increasing by point seven percent or a hundred and eleven thousand dollars. And of course, this amount will increase once the two rescinded grants that were approved earlier today are added back into this fund. For your expense comparison, 22 adopted to 23 requests, your personnel is increasing eight percent or nineteen thousand two hundred and thirty-one dollars. This increase does include the wage adjustment of four percent or a dollar per hour, and our increased medical insurance claim cost, and our Florida retirement system rate increases. Your operating is increasing four hundred and eighty-six percent, sounds like a huge number, it's thirty thousand seven hundred and thirty-four dollars, that's the increase. The largest increase is due to service charges that were not charged in prior year. Last year was the first year we started charging operating to the ECHO fund. And since it was the first year that the operating expenses were permitted, the service charges are always calculated a year or two behind, so that's why you see the increase this year. The service charges include janitorial services, computer replacement, the departmental service charge, liability insurance, and the administrative service charge. Capital outlay is decreasing ten point two percent or a thousand dollars. Your CRA payments out of the ECHO fund are increasing twenty-one point six percent or fifty thousand nine hundred and sixty-nine dollars, based on the CRA incremental value increases. Your set aside for trails and your ECHO grant awards are staying flat at the one and a half million for the trail set aside and the four and a half million for the ECHO grant award cycle. Commissions to the property appraiser and tax collector, they're shown as a hundred percent increase in the amount of three hundred and thirty thousand five hundred and thirty-seven dollars, as these commissions were not part of the fiscal year 21-22 adopted budget. And then reserves are increasing four point four percent or seven hundred and forty-two thousand one hundred and twenty-five dollars, as the revenues do outweigh the current expenses. And that is at the four and a half million dollar grant award, which, to this point, we have not gotten to that four and a half million dollar level in any of our grant cycles. So we have sufficient funding for ongoing grant awards, and you're still adding to your reserve balances. In the ECHO fund, there is more than sufficient funding for the ongoing operations and grant awards. Here's a potential for large legacy projects, such as the Bennett Park expansion that we spoke about during the capital meeting, or other direct county expenditure projects that would utilize a good portion of the large reserve balances. Obviously, those projects would have to be discussed with the ECHO board and with council to determine the desire to move forward with that. Still, based on current assumptions, the reserves are estimated to reach that twenty-nine point two million dollar level. An annual rollback in ECHO fund could still fulfill the ECHO mission and provide nine point eight million dollars in tax savings over the next four years, leaving the fund with a reserve balance of nineteen point four million by fiscal year 25-26. This slide gives you a categorical look at the revenues and expenses by year for the Volusia Forever Land Acquisition Fund. When Volusia Forever was renewed, we split the program into two funds. One fund for the acquisition of properties and one fund for the management of current Volusia Forever properties. The acquisition fund is where the ad valorem taxes are received, and then fifteen percent of those taxes are transferred annually to the land management fund. We'll go over both funds, starting with what you see here, the land acquisition fund. The land acquisition fund is presented at a flat millage rate of point two mils, with the same flat rate carried out in future years. You've got the same structure of revenues, expenses, and reserves. And then you can see in the land acquisition fund, based on the FY23 budget request and growth assumptions, you have a reserve balance listed of thirty-six point three million dollars by the end of the forecast period. Of course, this does not take into account the purchasing of any properties, other than the Palm Bluff extension that you see listed, which is being purchased this year. There is a list of properties in development, and that'll have an effect on the reserve balance in future years as we move forward with those. The change in taxable value for Volusia Forever shares the same tax base as ECHO and library, so there's no need to go over that again. And then you have your revenue comparison, 22 adopted to 23 request. You can see the ad valorem taxes, based on the flat millage rate, are set to increase by twelve point nine percent or the one point one million dollars. Your investment income remains flat for fiscal year 22-23, and your appropriated fund balance is increasing by six hundred and five percent or four point four million dollars. And it's just a good visual representation of how our fund balance grows based on our savings from prior years, which also feeds into the reserves you see on the next slide. So this is your comparison for Volusia Forever Land Acquisition. Your personnel is increasing thirty point nine percent or forty-one thousand seventy-three dollars. This increase includes the wage adjustment, and it includes the medical insurance and the FRS increases. The fiscal year 21-22 budget was adopted before the hiring of personnel for this fund, which is why the variance is slightly higher. The change from current year estimate is only five percent or eight thousand three hundred and twelve dollars. Your operating is increasing one thousand six hundred and eighty percent or one hundred and seventy-six thousand one dollar. As in ECHO, the inclusion of service charges, janitorial, indirect, departmental, liability, and vehicle replacement services increased the budget by twenty-four thousand four hundred and thirty-five dollars. The largest operating increase is a hundred and fifty-one thousand five hundred dollars in contracted services, which is for the land acquisition costs, appraisals, surveys, titles, and then a small amount for the land, small lot acquisition program. Your capital outlay is decreasing by eighty-one point nine percent or forty thousand seven hundred and sixty-five dollars. Your CRA payments are increasing by twenty-one point six percent or fifty thousand nine hundred and sixty-nine dollars, and that is again based on the CRA incremental value increases. And your fifteen percent set aside for land management is up a hundred and fifty-nine thousand seventy-nine dollars or twelve point nine percent. And your commissions to the property appraiser and tax collector are increasing by two hundred and nineteen thousand nine hundred and eight dollars compared to fiscal year 21-22. Only the property appraiser commissions were budgeted in fiscal year 21-22. The tax collector, while we included that in the estimate, it was not part of the 21-22 budget. Your reserves are increasing sixty-seven point six percent or four point eight million dollars. And again, you point back to the appropriated fund balance growth, and that is what is growing our reserves. The financial health for the land acquisition fund, there is sufficient funding for ongoing operations. The reserves in the fund are building for acquisition of properties. In the event we identify property and the reserve balance is not large enough to make the purchase, then we could utilize interfund loans from the general fund, ECHO, or land management fund, and pay back the loan in future years. Or we could also look to acquire external debt, like we did during the first Volusia Forever levy if needed. So there is money available for the purchase of properties. This is the other Volusia Forever fund, the land management fund is shown here, same structure, revenues, expenses, and reserves. And you can see at the bottom of the document, the twelve point one million dollar reserve balance by the end of the forecast period. You do have a slight use of fund balance in a few of these years, but nothing major, the reserves stay relatively flat. So in the revenue comparison, 22 to 23, the main source of revenue in the land management fund is the fifteen percent set aside. The revenue is increasing in fiscal year 22-23 by the hundred and fifty-nine thousand seventy-nine dollars. Your land management fees, which include timber sales, is remaining flat with fiscal year 21-22, as is the investment income. Your land rental revenue is increasing in fiscal year 22-23 by two percent or one thousand nine hundred and ninety-one dollars. And then the appropriated fund balance is decreasing by two and a half percent or three hundred and thirteen thousand three hundred and forty-nine dollars. This decrease is due to the use of fund balance in FY23 for capital outlay, capital improvement purchases, and a loss of investment earnings during fiscal year 21-22 that Ryan mentioned earlier. So this gives you your expense comparison for the land management fund. The personnel is increasing by four point seven percent or thirty-seven thousand six hundred and ninety-three dollars. This increase includes the wage adjustment of four percent or a dollar per hour for all staff, increase in medical insurance cost of six percent, and then the Florida retirement system rate increases. Your operating increases are up eight point six percent or sixty-six thousand eight hundred and thirty-one dollars. And this increase is mainly due to the administrative and departmental service charge increase of fifty-nine thousand seven hundred dollars. Capital outlay and capital improvements are decreasing by twenty-nine point six percent or forty-four thousand forty-nine dollars. And then your reserves are decreasing by one point seven percent or two hundred and twelve thousand seven hundred and fifty-four dollars due to the reduction in appropriated fund balance that we talked about on the last slide. As far as the land management fund financial health, the fifteen percent set aside for management of currently owned Volusia Forever properties is sufficient for ongoing operating expenses. There is some use of fund balance for capital purchases, and there is an adequate reserve balance maintained throughout the forecast period. The reserves are set aside for the continued management of the current forever properties that we have. So this slide gives you your categorical look at the revenues and expenses by year for the mosquito control fund. The fund is presented at a flat millage rate with fiscal year 21-22 at point one seven eight, point one seven eight one mils, and the same flat rate carried out in future years. Same structure with your revenues, expenses, and reserves. And you can see in the mosquito control fund, based on the FY23 budget request and growth assumptions, the fund will have a reserve balance of one point four million dollars by the end of the forecast period, with fifty-one percent of those reserves being the set aside reserve for emergency at ten percent per council policy. The change in taxable value for mosquito control, so mosquito control does have a different tax base than library, ECHO, and Forever. Mosquito Control is an east Volusia taxing district, so it is only on the east side of the county. Here you see the change in that taxable value. Fiscal year 22-23 did have, based on the preliminary numbers, a thirteen point two percent growth in taxable value, with two point three percent of that related to new construction. While the percentage looks similar, obviously, the total value is much different. The taxable value in the mosquito control district is thirty-three point nine billion, with new construction valued at seven hundred and sixty-four million, so quite different than the library district. You can see the forecast years assume growth is eight percent in '24, seven and a half percent in '25 and '26, with new construction at the two point two, two point one, and one point nine. Your mosquito control revenue is decreased for fiscal year 22-23 by twelve point six percent. The decrease comes from the reduction in fund balance of two million forty-three thousand one hundred and eighty-four dollars, as we are saving for the new building needs. The ad valorem taxes at the flat rate will generate six hundred and seventy thousand six hundred and fifty-six dollars more in additional revenue compared to 21-22's adopted budget. Your intergovernmental revenues represent funding received by the state and remains flat in fiscal year 22-23. Your charges for services is the revenue for performing work for cities outside of the mosquito control district, and this revenue also remains flat for 22-23. And then miscellaneous revenues, which includes investment income and the sale and surplus of equipment, is increased by ten thousand dollars for fiscal year 22-23. The expense budget comparison, so your personnel is increasing by point five percent or ten thousand three hundred and seventy-four dollars. This increase does include the wage adjustment, the medical insurance, the FRS rate increases. The increases are offset by a reduction in workers' compensation costs, so that's why it's only a point five percent increase. Your operating is increasing by seventeen point nine percent or three hundred and seventy-three thousand three hundred and forty-three dollars. The largest increase is due to the cost of aircraft maintenance increasing by three hundred thousand dollars, which includes a hundred and twenty thousand dollars for replacement blades. And there is also an increase in fuel cost of twenty-one thousand eight hundred and two dollars, and then service charge increases of fifty-nine thousand eight hundred and eighty-three dollars. Your capital outlay is a hundred and twenty-six thousand dollar increase, and it does fluctuate based on the equipment replacement needs. Fiscal year 23 has four trucks being replaced, as well as other equipment needs. Your capital improvements is a four hundred thousand dollar increase, and that is for the engineering and repair of the retaining wall on a section of the B-19 open channel that is north of Anna Marie Circle in Port Orange. So the financial health in the mosquito control fund, we looked at different options in the mosquito control fund, and due to the need for the new facility, we do not feel that rollback is a feasible option, based on the current assumptions. The need for the new building will not be funded in the forecast period. We will get to eight point six million out of the estimated eleven million dollar cost. The remaining two point three million could be funded by fiscal year 27-28, based on the annual transfer continuing. And then we do have the option to explore internal or external debt to satisfy the building needs. We would just need to keep the debt payment at approximately a million or less annually to make a difference in that fund. And then the ten percent emergency reserves in the fund are maintained throughout the forecast period. And then the last fund is the Ponce de Leon Inlet and Port District Fund. And so this fund is presented at the estimated rollback rate for fiscal year 22-23, with an estimated rollback rate applied to all the future years in the forecast. You do have the same setup with your revenues, expenses, and reserves. And you can see in the port fund, based on the fiscal year 23 budget request and growth assumptions, the fund will have a reserve balance of nine point two million dollars by the end of the forecast period. And we'll talk about those reserves a little bit on a few of the next slides. So the change in taxable value for the port district shares the same tax base as the mosquito control fund, so I won't go over that again, but it is there for representation. Your revenue comparison, so the port district revenues are mainly made up of ad valorem taxes and park entrance fees. Your ad valorem taxes are increasing by two and a half percent or sixty thousand three hundred and sixty-three dollars under the presented rollback rate. The park entrance fees for Smyrna Dunes Park and Lighthouse Point Park are increasing by forty-two point seven percent or four hundred and forty thousand seventy-five dollars, and that is based on trend. Your miscellaneous revenues, which is mainly investment income, is remaining flat for fiscal year 22-23. And then the appropriated fund balance is increasing by forty-one percent or one point two million, which, as you can, as you'll see on the next slide, translates into an increase in reserves. So your port budget expenses, they are increasing by twenty-six point six percent or one point seven million dollars. And the increases are by category as follows. Your personal services are increasing by three and a half percent or sixteen thousand five hundred and eighty-seven dollars. And again, this increase does include your wage adjustment, your medical cost, and the FRS system increases. Your operating is increasing by thirteen point eight percent or a hundred and sixty-four thousand two hundred and sixty-four dollars. The increase is because of an increase in contracted services at seventy-six thousand two hundred and sixty-seven dollars, and that is for the increased tolltaker cost and professional services at a hundred and twenty-five thousand for beach profile survey that provides beach erosion and dune restoration trend reports in support of the inlet management plan. These increases are partially offset by reductions in other operating expenses. Service charges in this fund were reduced by twenty-eight thousand nine hundred and twenty-four dollars. Your CRA payments are increasing by eight point two percent or seven thousand seven hundred and twenty dollars. And tax collector and property appraiser commissions are increasing by one point three percent or one thousand three hundred and four dollars. Capital outlay and improvements are decreasing. Capital outlay and improvements are decreasing by a combined 26%, or $359,550. We do have something new in the port fund that was started during fiscal year 21, 22, and that is a dedicated animal services officer was added to the port district. So for 21, or 22, 23, you see that $67,938 is 100% increase because it was not part of the 21, 22 adopted budget. Your reserves are increasing by 57.6%, or $1,823,112. And this is made up from the prior year savings, with $792,212 of new money being added to the reserves in 22, 23. So as far as financial health in the Ponce de Leon Port District Fund, it has sufficient funding for its ongoing operating expenses. The 10% emergency reserves are maintained throughout the forecast period. The reserves that we're building up are for potential South Jetty expansion. And then there is also potential to use port funding for other areas along the Halifax River. We have many fishing docks off of John Anderson and Ormond, and port funding is authorized to be used in these areas. So moving these assets over to port will provide some relief in the general fund where the assets are currently maintained. So we're exploring those options as well. And so that wraps up the forecast presentations that we had for today. At the July 5 meeting, we will, general fund, vote tran, economic development, Ocean Center, parking garage, the MSD fund, and fire services.
Questions, council?
Danny Robbins.
I won't call you Alex.
Sure.
Those that don't know, I've been calling Aaron Alex for the last two years, and I just got reminded of it two days ago. So sorry, Alex, Aaron.
You're good. Is Greta here today?
No. But between us, that has been a joke with me and her. So I call her Greta, and she calls me Alex, so it works.
Awesome. $67,000 animal service, what was that increase for on next fiscal year?
So it's for one dedicated animal services officer, and then the, it's $17,000 expenses that go along with it.
In?
Two parks, Smyrna Dunes and Lighthouse Point.
Okay. All right.
Everybody else? I guess you did a good job.
Thank you.
A lot of information.
It is.
And we don't need a motion to approve. It is what it is.
It is what it is, but you'll be seeing, again, of course, they don't get any feedback. This will be, the budget will be built off of them. So just keep in mind, especially next meeting, when we're in the general fund, the MSD and fire.
Okay, that takes us to item 13, community events. I don't see Kevin. Oh, there he is. Kevin Captain, item 13, community events.
Good afternoon, council. Kevin Captain, Community Information Director. Item 13 is the community events update. So we have the Edwin W. Park Senior Ribbon Cutting coming up this Friday on the 24th. This is a long time in the making. The playground equipment is up, and we're looking forward to some good weather on Friday morning, and looking forward to see Mr. Peck, and I know that he is very excited about this event, so coming up this Friday. Also, we do have the CCA nearshore reef deployment event. We had this, we had to postpone this due to contractor issues, and so it looks like it might happen next week, but stand by. We will announce once we get total confirmation and validation of this, but this will be about, a little bit under three miles off the coast of the Ponce Inlet Jetty. And so it'll be 18,000 tons of concrete and 50 tons of granite will be deployed to add to the nearshore reef. And then we have some mosquito control pop-up events. You'll also notice we have a little cool slider that we have on volusia.org, and we also had Marcus McDonough and Miranda Tressler on our radio show this week to talk about mosquito control. So the pop-up events are all in the county calendar. And basically, what they are meant to do is to provide educational materials and to teach the public about the many things that they can do, just right in your own yard. So with that, those are the three main events. For additional events, you can always go to the county council calendar under news. We keep that up, up to date on a daily basis. Any questions?
All right. Thank you. Thank you. And now, we have some appointments to the Contractors Licensing and Construction Appeals Board, and we need, we need seven appointments, and I believe we have six qualified volunteers. And I just want to say, looking, looking back at the incumbents who are, who are willing to serve again, thank you from, from the council. And to the new people, thank you. This is, this is actually a very important board, and we do need one more person. I think, depending on what the council wants to do, we could handle this as a, as a slate of the six candidates. Ben Johnson makes that motion to approve all six, seconded by Lowery. Any further discussion or comment?
Five.
Pardon me?
I think it's five, not six.
I counted, see, there was one added.
Oh, was there one added? Oh, I said, yeah.
Six, correct? Okay. All right. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries five, six appointments, five to zero. Thank you again for your willingness to serve on that board. And that, wow, that brings us to public participation, and I see one in the audience. That's the one we have. John Nicholson? Did you get through your newspaper?
Yeah, I did. My magazine. Got my hat there. And I didn't even die. I have diabetes, and if I don't eat, my sugar goes, and I could, a couple of things. One, adaptive reuse. Jim Chisum in City of Daytona Beach had a tendency to tear down buildings instead of using them. And I've noticed, we're going to go get a new building for mosquito control. And we just moved, I think, or we're going to move a fire station from one location to 92, so that'll leave an empty building. And then we're going to build a new building for the morgue, which will leave another empty building. So I'm hoping we go through this adaptive reuse instead of keep building and building and building and whatnot, because 11 million sounds like a lot of money to me. Secondly, we're going to have a huge tax increase, I'm presuming. I know the city of Daytona Beach has increased drastically with Baggerita Vale and Mosaic and whatnot. The tendency, and I'm almost positive you all are going to go to rollback, is to overextend the rollback to as much as you can. But the problem is, we're still going to need to increase salaries. We're still going to increase to go to $15. We're still going to have to have Sunrail paid for, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. So when you go to your rollback, please remember these other things are still coming down the pike, because it really, it's nice to say, oh gee, I just dropped taxes by X amount. If we struggle for the next year, it's only going to hurt us. And echo shocked heck out of me, going up to, what, 29.2 million in a couple of years? That's a lot of money just to kind of sit around. And I know we're going to two, 4.5 sessions per year. I know the city of Daytona Beach is like, well, we can't really ask, because we're asking for one. Well, I don't know if that's a rule or not, but if we have 29 million, nobody expected to have that kind of money sitting around. And if we had dispensed this money even five years ago, before the cost of construction, the cost of labor, all that other stuff went around, we'd have gotten more bang for our buck. And I'm guessing, with the interest rates going the way they're going to go, we are going to have inflation and all kinds of problems for years to come. So I'm asking to take a look at having that reserve and possibly asking the cities, if you want anything, ask for it now before things skyrocket. Thank you much.
Thank you. County manager? I don't have anything at this time. County attorney?
Yes, yesterday, I sent you a letter that we sent to the attorney for the West Volusia Hospital Authority, basically implementing the court's order requesting payment of the just shy of $2.5 billion obligation. The court found them to be obligated to pay for their Medicaid contribution for this budget year. We have reached out to the legal counsel to see if they would like to resolve this without them contesting it further. We have not gotten a response back. I did get a copy of a report that was sent to the governing body, West Volusia Hospital Authority, and their legal counsel is of the opinion that the contract they entered into with their Tampa lawyer preauthorized them to pursue this matter further with the Fifth District Court of Appeal, and if necessary, to the Fourth Spring Court, without additional vote of their governing body. So I am not optimistic that they will pay. So I anticipate an appeal, although I certainly would prefer a different outcome. So, thank you.
Thank you. County council, today it starts with Danny Robbins.
Thanks, Chair. Is Jessica Fentress here? How about Clay? This might be something you'd be able to help us on real quick. As, as you guys know, derelict vessels has been one of our biggest issues, not just southeast Volusia, but everywhere and then on the St. Johns. I know I was out on the boat with y'all last week, and we were talking about seeing how, or I rose the issue, how, on how we can maybe look at funding mechanism for a full-time, maybe officer to, to address some of the derelict vessels on a more regular basis, and was wondering if that's something we might be able to look into in terms of, I know there's port, possibly port authority money, or manatee protection funds, anything like that? That'd be something worth kind of exploring, to kind of stay on top of that issue?
Jessica Fentress, Volusia County's Coastal Division. The port district would be the mechanism, and we currently have funding available in this fiscal year for what we call contract services, if we need additional support during reef deployment, during the current vote removal process we have going on right now. Police, the work for putting a case together for a derelict vessel must be done by a police officer or a code enforcement officer, because it is a legal case to remove someone's private property. We can use funding available in the port district to short-term fund a detail rate for officers, either through beach safety or the sheriff's department. They have a marine patrol, I heard, is starting to get reinvigorated pretty well. The port district would not be a funding mechanism, though, for the St. Johns.
Would Echo cover? I mean, it's kind of unorthodox, but I mean, if it's a stupid question, I'm just thinking out loud.
Well, right now, we're primarily coordinating with FWC on the St. John's River, and as Jessica was saying, it has to be code enforcement or enforcement that takes it through the magistrate to have it declared.
I know that they're experiencing the same thing that we all are. They're short-staffed, but it doesn't eliminate the problem. So just thinking of other ways where we can, until we get, you know, we're doing a great job so far, but we're running out of funding in other areas, whether it's through FINED or wherever. Just trying to look at a more permanent or semi-permanent until we get a lot of these licked, or kicked in the butt here and under control, but also to, to, to expand their scope, because, I forget the FWC officer's name, but he said that they're also looking at, and I don't know if it's something we can do, but go after the registered owner of the vessel to recoup, or put a lien, suspends their license, where they can't, have to pay our fees and give the taxpayers back their money before he can drive again, own a vessel, register a vehicle, motor vehicle, whatever. Is that something that we can look at in recapturing that, those funds as well?
Yeah, there may be another route that we can go on this. Legislatively, we might be able to get the state law modified to allow for the zero-cost grants to cover.
Yeah, those are all state issues, so we'll add those to our legislative agenda.
Okay.
Representative Lee shares that concern. He had numerous conversations with us, and we were identifying that the primary issues pertain to getting the vessel actually declared derelict. Jessica's been working very well with us to come up, and we've got the continuing service contract. But once we have it declared derelict, we can get to it very quickly, and we've been taking advantage of the 100% funding offered through the state. They actually ran out of money, because everybody was waiting for this to happen, took care of it. So there's something we can do to help expedite getting the designation as a derelict vessel, and then also adding on to it potential.
But what I'm getting at, too, is now that that funding has run out, do we know when it's going to be re-upped, or is there another mechanism where we can kind of keep this going?
It's my understanding at the state level that this program is being funded vigorously. FWC was told at the beginning of the last fiscal year that there are two priorities, our manatees and then derelict vessels. It would be interesting if we could find a way, probably legislatively, for the grant to not only cover the removal and disposal of the vessel, but possibly staff time investigating and building the case. That's where we might be able to fund a detail of a law enforcement officer assigned directly to this project for a routine and consistent basis.
I just didn't know when I was comparing it, just mentally, to our inmates, for instance, where, you know, we can collect those fees afterwards, or up to three years down the road, if we can do something at a local level to kind of do the same thing where, hey, if you're going to do this stuff, there's going to be some penalties, because it shouldn't be, you know, everybody, we shouldn't be paying the piper for everybody else, you know, these.
And that may be something we look into in the port district conversation that we have.
I would imagine, you know, the state budget is a July 1st, July 1st, so usually they get their coffers filled in July, so we can find out what the new budget is. But that's typically, you know, when state money becomes available again. So it's not uncommon, they run out this time of year, just towards the end of the year. So I think they ran out a while ago in this program, but we'll take a look at what's available in July, and we'll take a look legislatively, see what we can push for.
Thanks. Thank you, guys. And then, just real quick, I talked to Mark Swanson. I came across two products that we might be able to add, or expand, or accompany with our AED program, just for our neighborhoods. One product called Zip Stitch. My email's been down, I haven't been able to email to you. Another one, just for our public buildings, a de-choker device, which is, which is good for a lot of reasons. I don't know if that's something we can look into, but really two cool products, and can't find anything bad about them. That's all. Thank you.
And next we have Billy Wheeler, who's not here, and I don't want to diverge, divulge personal information, but Billy is with a sister, and I just want Billy to know that the county council has her in her prayers and staff. It's a, it's a serious situation. So that's why she's not here. Next, we have Barb Gertman, Vice Chair.
Nothing today, thank you. I know it's a shocker, but.
Ben Johnson.
Mr. Dyer, didn't I hear you write what you said from the very start of the hospital board deal, that they gave the attorney the right, if it was beat in one place, to go to the next, and to go to the next without coming back in front of their board?
Yes.
Yes. That is what their correspondence to their governing body has said. And basically, as I read it, left it to the board to tell them to not proceed with the appeal, otherwise they would.
Okay, so there is a catch in there.
Well, yeah. And, you know, just, it's certainly something that I wish they would take to the board and have that discussion. But the way they've set it up, where is that they're ready to go up to the Florida Supreme Court without additional action by their board.
That's pretty reckless. You know, put it in the hands of an attorney all the way up without discussing what has happened in the courts at your, at this point.
Yeah.
Very, very, no, it's pretty, very reckless. Kind of astonishing. Okay, that's all I have. Dr. Lowery?
I'm good. Be celebrating 49 years of marriage tomorrow, so that qualifies my wife for veteran's benefits, I believe.
You'd taken her to Chick-fil-A for dinner?
Uh, no, not exactly.
Okay.
He's right.
And Heather Post is also not with it, recuperating from, she's recuperating. We hope she'll be back soon. And that leaves me, Attorney Dyer, I just want to follow up on what Ben said. I think this needs to be clear. If, if they don't pay that bill, who pays it?
The, under the court's order, they're obligated to pay. They could pursue an appeal. I believe their deadline to pay us is July 14th. Between now and then, if they do want to contest that, they would need to file an appeal with the Fifth District Court of Appeal. If they do not file the appeal, we will seek to enforce the court's order.
What is it due?
I believe the payment is due July 14th to us. It's just shy of 2.5 million. We are covering, because the state bills us, I believe it's monthly, so we're covering that expense in the interim, but the court's...
At the general fund.
Correct.
So every taxpayer in the county is paying for what the Westvalush taxpayers have already been billed and collected for.
We will, you know, that was for one year, so we're in the process of finding a prepared for upcoming budget year in a division of those costs, which you did decide last time, but we will be bringing that back to you just to confirm your action.
Okay.
So...
Thank you. On a, on a brighter note, I just have two quick things that are, that are good news. We had a lively debate last time at, well, not last time, at our workshop on growth management. And there was discussion about the, the grant to pay for the low-impact development study. And that's already been approved. We just got an email this morning through Ginger Adair that that grant is approved. And I don't think Clay has the money yet in his pocket.
First of all.
But, but that's, that's good news. So that keeps us on track to do some of the things that we had, that we would really like to do. Last thing, I just wanted to make, I think this is the first public announcement, Dr. Burbaugh, that on August 13th in Daytona Beach at 9:00 AM, there will be a Volusia County Wildlife Corridor conference that Dr. Brad Burbaugh is putting together with the help of our staff and some outside agencies, like the Florida Wildlife Corridor. I think Live Wildly is, and there'll probably be other people that he, he may put on the agenda. I know he has a list of people, but I just want the public to know and to put that on their calendar. It will be a worthwhile event, and it will cover the, some of the things that people might often not think about with a wildlife corridor, which is a voluntary sale of property. We're looking for people with property within the, what the state of Florida has designated as a wildlife corridor. That's a program that Florida legislator voted for 100%. That never happens. Every Republican, every Democrat, and whatever else there is, all voted for it. Governor signed it, and they appropriated $300 million. Our job is to find willing buyers within that corridor, willing sellers within that corridor, to use these funds that have already been set aside. So the conference will deal with many things, but one in particular I'm looking forward to is the, the financial benefits. Dr. Burbaugh and I, and some others, were able to go to a similar conference in Orlando where, and we both, oddly enough, ended up in the same breakout session on the financing of it and the financial benefits. Because most people look at it as a, as a debit on the, on the accounting page. So that'll be an interesting discussion. Environmental benefat, benefits, landowner benefits, Volusia County resident benefits. So please, put that on your calendar. It's, it's going to be a great event. We already have the potential of several sponsors who want to help, help us participate or to participate and help us get a really, a great event. The one in Orlando that we went to was extremely well-attended, but it drew from all over central Florida. This is focusing just on our part of the wildlife corridor in Volusia, which, which the Florida Wildlife Corridor, I don't know if it's a department or division in Tallahassee that the governor appointed, sees Volusia as kind of the critical part. We're right in the middle of it from, from wildlife coming from the south that needs safe passage to the north. So we're a really important part, and they, the state is very appreciative of the leadership that Volusia County has shown already in, in supporting the corridor. And I, Brad, I want you to know, I appreciate what you're doing in that effort, and, you know, I look forward to working with you anywhere I can. And so August 13th in Daytona, we're, we're looking at several really good sites at 9:00 AM. More to follow. Thank you. That's all I have. That's it. We will, we will adjourn at 2 o'clock. Is that, is that historical?
Maybe.
Thank you.